Been met all in from the waiting room. We have about 22 people in the waiting room.
Tell me when they're in.
Okay, I think everyone is in.
All right, great. All right, we will begin. This meeting of the Livingston City Commission is called to order. May we have roll call, please?
Chair Hoiblind.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
President.
Commissioner Maye.
Here.
Commissioner News.
Here.
Freeman is attempting to join us.
All right, thank you. Next on our agenda is public comment. Please be reminded that public comment should be limited to items over which the city commission has supervision, control jurisdiction and advisory power as well as public comment should not be based on what will be discussed further on in the agenda. Please state your name and address or put your name in the chat for us to call on you. Do we have any public comment? Any public comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to comment on our View Vista partnership opportunity. My name is James Domino. I work for Neighbor Works Montana.
Oh, James, since we will be having you present in a few minutes or you'll be part of that, could you wait for your comments then?
Oh, okay.
Okay, and I'm a Miss Chair, by the way. I was just teasing. Any other public comment? Okay, we're going to move on. Next on our agenda is our consent items. We have consent items A, B and C. Do I have a motion from the commission on consent items A, B and C? Or any that you would like pulled for consideration?
I'll make you a motion to approve consent items A, B and C.
Snackton.
We have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Maybe. Roll call, please.
Chair Hoiblind.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Freeman. Sorry, he's not rejoiced. Commissioner Maybe.
Warren.
For.
For.
Motion passes. Faith, you're cutting out a little bit. That might be an issue, might be the wind. Next on our agenda, we have no proclamations. You have scheduled public comments. First, we have Jim Domino of Neighbor Works Montana to present View Vista's Community Partnership Opportunity. Mr. Cardus, do you want to mention anything first before Jim has his public comment, scheduled public comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, I'll just be able to prevent you most of the information tonight, but this is important from the city's perspective, just because it's their first step towards bringing some of that infrastructure into the city and moving towards a more collaborative relationship with the, with View Vista and eventually looking at annexation. So that's the scope you should be looking at. But other than that, James, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I am James Domino. I work for a nonprofit based out of Great Falls, Neighbor Works, Montana. And our focus is providing and promoting affordable homes for Montanans. And I'm part of the resident owned community program in Neighbor Works, Montana. I'd also like to introduce our resident owned community program manager Danielle Maiden, who is joining us here. The resident owned community program focuses on helping to organize and assist manufactured home communities in actually purchasing the land on which their homes are located. We accomplish this by helping them to become a nonprofit cooperative and then also helping them to finance the purchase of the property from the previous owner either through a partnership with a local bank or financial institution or our national affiliate, Rock USA. And View Vista became Montana's 13th resident owned community in January of this year. And as part of the resident owned community program and the purchase process, we actually do a very detailed analysis of the infrastructure needs and identify and prioritize improvements that will help to make the community a better place to live and have it become much more of a more comfortable location and simply more in line with, with what we believe affordable homes should be, nice places to live. And with that, I will turn it over to Danielle and she will actually talk a little bit about the infrastructure needs at View Vista and how we approached this sale and what our future plans are.
Good evening. Like Jim said, my name is Danielle Maiden. I'm the Rock Program Manager for Neighbor Works, Montana. Currently, we have 14 resident owned communities in the state of Montana and we are always looking to convert more manufactured housing communities that are investor owned to resident owned communities. So we have them all the way from Libby to Billings at this point. So as Jim mentioned, and I'm sure you guys have heard, View Vista has been resident owned since February. And so we started organizing the residents last fall, working with George, the previous owner, to do that. And through that, we did quite a bit of due diligence with engineers on the infrastructure and also on the apartment complexes. And so, you know, this is, this deal is really out of our model. We don't typically purchase anything that has apartment complexes or more than three to four units for rentals. But we recognize the importance of this housing stock in Livingston and how vital it is to your community to have affordable housing. So we actually engaged Opportunity Bank to do the, be the first lender on this deal and Neighbor Works, Montana is the second lender. I apologize if you can hear my dogs and my children, but I'm the only one home with them. So through that, we were able to secure the property and we have been working with HRDC out of Bozeman and they have committed with a letter of intent to purchase the apartments from the residents and then have a ground lease for the land that is underneath the apartments. So our intention is to work with HRDC to acquire those apartments. And at that time, we would like to do a full renovation of the infrastructure that's in the ground and a full renovation of the apartments in partnership with HRDC. So that is our long-term plan and, and really our hope would be that that would can begin at three years of purchase. So, you know, about two and a half more years and then we would be able to start that process. So far, things are going really well with resident ownership. View Vista is a very engaged community and the residents are very active and I think they're doing a great job of running their community and making important changes. You know, those immediate improvements that were identified in the due diligence process. They are making a significant investment in the community to bring up some of those upgrades and do some work in the apartments that are immediately needed. And I believe we shared the due diligence reports with you guys from the engineers. So with that, I think that is really all I have to share with you guys and we can follow up with questions on what the plans are for the community and how it operates.
And I would like to also add that the consecutive service agreement concept is certainly not something that is new. Just recently assisted with the initiation of a consecutive service agreement with a manufactured home community in Haver, with the city of Haver. And they have same, very similar infrastructure needs that View Vista has and needing some improvements in their water and sewer systems. The consecutive service agreement essentially accomplishes two main goals. One is that it incorporates the system into the city sampling plan and it doesn't necessarily mean that it will be sampled all the time, but it, it simply incorporates the existing system into the water testing and sampling. And then also opens up the opportunity for a future grant and loan opportunities that normally are sponsored by a local government entity such as the Community Development Block Grant Program that would essentially pay for any of the infrastructure improvements and, and this consecutive service agreement is in Haver is, is basically the exact same agreement that we're proposing for View Vista. And it does not involve any increased maintenance cost or expenses for the city and does not involve any changes to existing operations. So it really helps to set the path forward for, for future improvements and makes it a lot more easy to negotiate that path.
All right, thank you, James and Danielle. Very informative. Let's open it to the commissioners with questions or board questions. Do we have any questions to start off? Well, I have a or did I hear someone?
Yes.
Go ahead, Warren. Go ahead.
After reading the agreement, if I understood it correctly, there's really no obligation or responsibility to the city other than maintaining the, the mains and the sewer line to where it is now. And then basically that's, that's it. It's what we're doing now. If I read it correctly.
That, that is correct, yes.
Thank you.
Which leads me to one of my questions. Warren, are you done?
Yes, thank you.
One of my questions is will there be requests in the future of other needs that would come from the city? Things that we could do to help or that you would ask for as far as fees, et cetera? What is the current route to take?
Well, I, I believe what we're planning is really to address the major infrastructure needs that were identified in the, in the property conditions assessment by those priority needs. And the consecutive service agreement would also allow us to move forward with possibly the, some of the ideas that, that could be looked at would be a special improvement district or something along those lines where the residents of the community would be helping to cover any, any improvements or costs associated in the future. So I would say that I think what we've identified would be the immediate short-term needs. And then in the future, it would be something we would want to work with View Vista and the city together on and identifying any potential other improvements. But our, our whole emphasis and goal is to again, help you to become a very nice place to live and help it become a, a showpiece for what resident owned communities can be and currently helping to reduce that sometimes that the negative stigmas and connotations that are often associated with manufactured home communities. So I would say that there's certainly many, many opportunities for future partnerships and future projects.
Great, thank you. I am excited. I just have to say that I'm excited about this project. I work next door. I have a lot of families that I work with that live there. I have coworkers that live there and to see some positive change and supports that will go into that small part of our community, I'm excited to see. And I think it's time and I look forward to it. Anyone?
Chair Hoiblind.
Yes, sir.
Um, at first, James, I want to say I'm so happy to see you here. We had been seeing each other at the Park County Housing Coalition for the last several months. And so I'm really appreciating that you're here. This is a topic, this, this particular property, I think, has been really exciting to the people of Livingston that are watching the housing market. This has been a project that a lot of people for the past however long you said it's been going on, a year plus, have really rallied behind. I was hoping, and Chair, I don't know who to direct this question to, but I was hoping we could hear how this agreement plays into, because I think, but I'm not for sure that this is sort of one of many steps towards annexation and making this maybe a sustainable, the vision match the reality in terms of sustainable for the people who own the property. So if that's not clear, let me know when I can expand. But I think one concern was that this is on the long-term list for possible annexations because for those, I don't know if Faith can pull up a map, but um, this is that property that I believe is surrounded by city. But it's technically in the county. So how does this agreement help? Help with the overall goal in terms of like how this fits with annexation so that that wouldn't be a burden? And I think you got at it a little bit with the CID, but if you have anything else to add. And Chair Hoiblind, I don't know if this is better for Michael or for James or?
Michael, can you start with that? And then Danielle and James, if there's any thing you could add, but how does annexation or future annexation, which is on, it sounds like on both sides of this issue? What, what's the advantage or what, what does that mean to the community and to this group of people?
So we'll actually have some more presentations for you on this when we get to the agenda item, that's the agreement itself. And I think that probably be the best place to cover it because we'll have the agreement there and we can talk through some of the, the, the other steps that would come after the agreement as we bring that in front of you.
Thank you.
Hey, any other comments or questions from the commission? All right.
Yes, I, no. I'm sorry, I agree with Mike. I'm going to wait till later in the presentation to ask my questions when we get further on into the agenda. That's all.
All right, thank you, Quentin. All right, well, thank you, James and Danielle. We appreciate your time and your presentation. Next on our agenda, we have Beverly Christensen of TCA Architects to present a preliminary basic yield study for workforce housing at the Voyage Property. Mr. Cardus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is coming before you as an extension of our discussion when we started looking at the Voyage Property. The commission had asked for some more clarity in how it could be used, what would happen in that area. While we're still working through other portions of, of that request to get you the information, we contacted TCA and Beverly and they have created this presentation for you, which I think is a wonderful, at least a example of what can be done with that property. Beverly is currently the Studio Director and Associate Principal of TCA and they have done a ton of projects that are in this region and in this scope. You know, anything from multifamily housing, from smaller ones to walk-up ones that we're going to see tonight to huge high rises. So they're, they're really qualified in being able to present this to you and we were excited that they were able to partner with this and they brought us, what I think is a great presentation. And I will turn it over to Beverly. And Beverly, just let us know if you want us to go through the, the presentation or if you want to run it from your end, we can give you permission to do that, just however you'd like to do it.
If you want to just give me permission, I can share my screen and, and walk through it.
Okay, you should be able to share.
Recording, there we go. Make sure I get the right screen. All right, so you guys should be able to see the cover page. Beautiful picture of the town we love and immigrant. So I'm going to just, I'll run through some of this early stuff fairly quickly because you guys are all familiar with what the surroundings are, but it's how we start a project like this, we try and look at, at the situation of where it is and what's around it. First, we need to get the, there we go. So we look big picture at the site. Again, you guys are probably all fairly familiar. The site's located off to the west. Primary downtown is off to the east. Went to the site and took some pictures, managed to get it on a fairly cloudy day. So you can't see all the mountains on the side, but we all know that they're there. But it's a, really has some great potential. I think it's a fantastic site for a project of this nature. This is where we get more into the meat. So when we look at a study like this, we start with really big generalizations and just basic building blocks. We know from Michael that there is to be 160 foot easement on the north side. So you'll see that we have that laid out here. That allows us to have ingress and egress as well as allowing a nice street along the northern border. And it also leaves us enough area to have plenty of open space, potentially a walking trail of some kind. And it provides a buffer between this multifamily project and the housing, the single family housing to the north. As you look a little bit closer at the detail, we've, what we're showing are either two or three-story walk-up buildings, which means that they don't have elevators, but they do have at least one enclosed garage for each unit. We've also just conceptually increased the size of those garages slightly to allow for storage units because we all know that living in Montana means gear. So just big picture, we've oriented the main buildings along the north side so that they would have their front doors facing the street and the garages facing south towards the common street. This is a, a very common approach from an urban planning standpoint so that as you're driving into the complex, you're not necessarily just looking at garages, you're looking at the doors and the windows and the areas where people actually live. As you come into the site, you have, we have an east-west spine and then we've got three more buildings located to the south. And then because of the topography of this area, we've identified, for instance, the tot lot could be located over on this corner here. We have a small area here that could be used as a dog area, snow storage area. All of these are fairly schematic at this time or very conceptual, but it's to try and give you an idea of, of what could be here. Trying to think if there's anything else specific. So overall, just looking at the statistics, the site's just over nine and a half acres. Once we take out the easement, we're left with about 4.3 acres. Our analysis tells us that we'll get somewhere, we could potentially get somewhere around 100 dwelling units in nine buildings. And that would include, we would include some common laundry areas. As I said, they would have garages. We're assuming an average unit size of around 800 square feet. Parking, we have approximately 167 stalls total, 108 of those would be covered or fully enclosed. This is just a, a quick snapshot of what a building footprint could look like. This is a typical building that we use for this typology. You can see the garages on the left and on the bottom, they have two stairs. They're a mixture of one bedroom and two bedroom, although we do have the potential that we could, for instance, combine a two-bedroom and a one-bedroom into a three-bedroom for family units if that was desirable. And then the last two pictures, last two pages are more pretty imagery. The first thing here was looking at the context a little bit. We've got some of the historic buildings that we all know. And then we included the hospital, which is relatively new, but is, seems to be a really good response to the historic context, but still has some more contemporary feelings to it. It just feels like it fits in the community very well, in our opinion. Then the final page are just some images of other projects, some of them projects that are ours, some of them not, that show some ideas of how this, this complex actually could feel. The image on the upper right is actually a veterans housing project that we did in Southern California. That is a lot of very small units actually, but the community that it's in has a very strong drive to have a craftsman feel. So they challenged us to find a way to build that in a very affordable way. So that actually has been a very successful project. And then the other images you see here are images that we pulled just from searching for, from our photo stock. They're not necessarily projects that we've done, but we feel like things like a shed roof, which is very contextual. We've got, but what's sometimes called a butterfly roof on the one on the lower right, very simple materials used in creative ways. The bottom center image shows a walkway going between, going between the buildings, which can create a really nice environment for people to come out and really get to know each other as they're coming out the front door. And then the image on the lower right gets at that idea that I was talking about where along that main northern street, we really want to have the front doors, if you will, rather than garages. So that's really the end of my presentation. I'm happy to go back and answer any questions, provide more detail if anyone has anything.
Does anyone have a question, commissioners?
I'll ask a question, Chair Hoiblind. Thank you, Beverly, first. Thank you for this lovely presentation. Can you, I'm just trying to anticipate some of the questions from the community. And I wonder, could you talk a little bit about, since it's adjacent to the railway? And I know we have a lot of houses in Livingston near the railway, but a lot of those were built 100 years ago. So could you talk a little bit about what kinds of things you do for mitigation on that, that far further southern edge of the property in terms of safety? I think a tot lot's like, that's like a toddler park, right?
Yeah.
So like, what do you do for safety and to mitigate noise and coal dust or whatever the things are that people are concerned about, just to protect those residents?
Yeah, it's, you know, it's actually quite interesting. We've been doing more and more studies in some of the more dense urban environments where we're right up against rail lines and part of it is that's just the land that's left. So generally, we try and do things like orienting the buildings, like these two buildings have their shorter edge facing out. I think on this site, one of the things you really have going for you is that there's a fairly good grade difference between where the railway is and where the site sits. And that really is quite beneficial.
And that really is quite beneficial. There will definitely be things that we'll have to do to mitigate noise. In many of our projects that are this close to a rail of any kind, we end up doing, for instance, windows that are a little bit more acoustically sufficient, because you want to keep some of that noise out. You want people to be able to sleep at night. And then as far as I would, I'm trying to think what else specifically we would need to do. We'd have to look at the systems in the buildings. I would assume that we would probably end up with some type of a we're going to have heaters, probably not going to have air conditioners because of where we live, but we can look at ways to filter any air that's brought in from the inside, certainly.
Thank you. The other things that I've heard people mention when, because I'm on the planning board, so I hear, I hear different comments from the community. We're like, I think it would have, things people have said in the past have had to do with landscaping or maybe like fences in in terms of like keeping dogs and kids off the railroad property.
Oh, absolutely.
So I don't know. It's not always a given that that developers are thinking that, so I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, no, we would, we would absolutely, in in our estimation, a dog area is always fenced, because we don't want to take the chance that someone's dog is running off. And same with a children's play area. It's just, you want to be careful. And there is a pretty good slope difference, right where we're showing that tot lot, so we don't want the kids just rolling down the hill. That would be a bad thing.
Right, that would be a bad thing. Thank you so much. Taking notes on those acoustic windows over here. Close to the tracks.
Thanks.
Sure. Happy to answer the questions.
All right, other Commissioners. Quentin and Warren, Mel.
I'm kind of interested in, what we're looking at is usually presented by a developer. I'm not really sure what the, what the purpose is of 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 our thus considering this. Thank you.
Thank you, Warren. Michael, do you want to help answer that?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. So it really is a conceptual idea of what could be done with that property. One of the questions when we were looking at it was, could it be developed? And how could it be used? And so this, I thought, answered two of those questions. One, yeah, it absolutely can be developed, but it can also be developed in accordance with some of the high priorities that the city has right now, or I'd say the community has right now. You can see those coming out through the growth policy, through the Park County Housing Coalition. And this is the type of housing that is missing from the Livingston inventory, right? There are very few multifamily housing units like this, especially that many. So that would be a significant addition to that inventory. But this is not a proposal as in, hey, the city's going to do this, or a certain developer's going to do this. It's more of a, as we look at purchasing that property, what are some of the uses and what are some of the values that we could get out of it if we decide to go forward with the purchase?
Thank you.
Thank you, Warren. So Michael, that leads me to a question too on, we had talked about having potential connector roads, a more direct route in and out of that neighborhood. With this design, and I don't know, Beverly, if you have something to add to this, but with this design, is that possible?
I think there's, from our standpoint, there's enough area here that should you decide that you want to bring access another way, absolutely, there's plenty of possibilities. This is not like many of the projects we get where it seems like there's only one solution. And we did leave, you'll see on the eastern edge, we did leave, we've got cul-de-sacs on either side, which could be connections to another road if if something else came in as well. But I feel like, yes, there's flexibility on this site.
All right, thank you, Beverly. And then what about, when, I know it's not up on our screen right now, but there's the area to the north. I can't remember what you called it right now, sorry. Like, just there's a separation and you said there was nine plus acre to, and why, why is that something needed, or is there potential for that within the design?
The 160-foot easement was something that Michael brought to us. But from a design standpoint, it really does serve as a way to provide a buffer between the single-family homes to the north and the multifamily homes that we're talking about. Certainly, as you start evaluating this and looking at how it all plays out, and once you start, if you start partnering with a developer, for instance, you may determine that you want to shrink that easement just a little bit and get a little more buffer on the south end. But again, there's enough area here where you definitely have flexibility. Did that answer your question?
Yes, very well. Thank you. Other Commissioners?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Quentin.
Just, you know, conceptually, I know this is all conceptually, but what are we looking at? The target price for as rentals go? Do you have any thoughts on that?
I'll take a swing at that one, although I think it's, it's really tough to say because of how fast construction costs are changing in the area. And I think it depends on how we go about it. So if we're really looking at making this workforce housing, which I think is a great, a great use for the property, then I think we have to look at ways of lowering that construction cost for whoever the developer would be that would step in. That would probably mean looking at things like not charging impact fees, not charging for utility hookups, possibly not even charging for the property itself, but but giving that as part of the incentive with certain requirements and how they were to develop it. So those, those are some of the ideas that would bring those rent rents down. But I think it's really hard to give you a number right now, depending on on how that's going to go. But I think that is, that is how we would approach it, is look at it, for what incentives can we give, and then what concessions would we get for those incentives? And some of that might be some form of rent control, whatever that would be in relation to the market, or so many units at X percent of, you know, the average income rate here in Livingston. Maybe living priority to 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 residents who are already working in Livingston, maybe not necessarily living in Livingston, but working in Livingston to make sure that we're hitting our workforce. So I think there's a, there's a lot to unpack in that and there's a lot to unwrap. But I think there's steps we could take to get it into the target rent range that we would really look for, in that probably right now. I mean, anything under 1,000 would be amazing. And really, anything up to 1,200 is is still pretty affordable for where we're at.
And if you don't mind, I'll just add that all of the things that Michael's talking about are very typical with with the arrangements that we see with the affordable housing developers that we work with. And we do work with national affordable housing developers, including some that work in this area. And it just really comes down to developing, the developer, the developer having a relationship with the community to help determine exactly what that package is and what it looks like. And generally, it ends up that that affordability is, as he said, it's a percentage of the median income for that particular area.
Thank you. That's, yeah, that answers my question there. Thank you.
Thank you, Quentin. I do have one last question, Beverly, that I should have asked before, but it just dawned on me. So one of the big concerns that has come to us in the past is multiple family having a detrimental impact on value of other homes around it. And Michael, I don't know if you have any information on this as well, but how with a multifamily housing project like this, how do we reconcile that concern?
I'll let Beverly clear this up, because I'm sure she has much better information than I do. But really, there's not a good statistical link between property values and and distance or proximity to these kinds of developments, especially the kind we're looking at. It's a, it's a really nice facility, and that's part of that 160-foot easement, is it's it's well separated, there's good division between the two. There's really just not going to be a huge impact in any of the surrounding property, especially in today's real estate market. It's just, while there probably will be concerns, and I'm sure there will be concerns about view sheds as well as as property values. But I think those are are not significant in the realm of this kind of project and what we're able to do for other community members.
Yeah, I think that's fair, and I think that, you know, that's a conversation that that we hear frequently, and part of it, a lot of it gets back to helping people understand that just because something's multifamily doesn't mean that there's going to be sofas on the lawn and wild parties. And also, I think a lot of people start thinking that it's necessarily going to be people who are transitory. And particularly, if you start targeting these to people who are working in your community, that makes it so they're less transitory, they're already invested in your community. So in my mind, that makes it a much easier sell in terms of, in terms of what people sometimes think about multifamily. You know, this is what I've been doing for the last seven years, so I'm probably a little bit biased, but I think that you can find plenty of instances of single-family homes that you don't want to be next to also.
Thank you. Good point. Anything else from anyone? All right, well, thank you, Beverly, for your presentation. We appreciate it.
Thank you all. Thank you very much for your time, and if anyone has questions, I'm happy to answer them at any time.
Thank you. So we're moving on. We have, tonight, we have no public hearings. We have one ordinance, we have ordinance, ordinance number 2094, an ordinance of the City, Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, amending Chapter 23 of the Livingston Municipal Code entitled Trees by clarifying that all Boulevard trees are to be properly maintained, including mean watering and removal when necessary by the homeowner adjacent to the Boulevard. Mr. Cardus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this code, I think we've, we've looked at it a few times. And the Tree Board has worked on it extensively, and I think it's is a great final product. They went beyond what I thought was the initial purpose, which is great. Not only do we clarify trees in the Boulevard, but we also clarify trees in the alleys and surrounding areas. I think it does a great job of delineating who is responsible. It's clear that the homeowner is responsible if it's next to their private property, but it's also clear that if there isn't private property, then the city is responsible for it. But that the city does have authority in the boulevards and the public spaces to make the changes, the adjustments, the trimming, removal that we need to do to keep public safety or any other issues that we would have. So I think they did a great job. It's very clear in those aspects. It also addressed the questions about fruit trees, which I think was brought up in an earlier commission meeting. I think they did a good job with that, with making that available to the public, but only, I think, in a reasonable manner. So people aren't out there on, you know, 20-foot ladders trying to harvest the top of trees in the Boulevard. So I don't know if Marshall wants to add anything, but I think it's a great, great product, and we recommend approval. This is the first reading, so it'll come back before you again for a public hearing, and then it would take effect 30 days after that.
Marshall, do you want to share anything else, or should we just open it to public comment?
Yeah, I don't think I have a lot to add to that. So yeah, basically, we, we wanted to address this question of fruit trees, and we put something in there just so you'd have something to discuss that we thought worked. I think the opinion of the city arborist, Eric, you know, he doesn't really see this issue a lot, but he thought this was fine. And yeah, some of these yellow highlights in this draft were added during the review by the city attorney, but yeah, it sounds like it all kind of checks out and still addresses the original intent.
Great, thank you. Michael, could could you address any changes or corrections that were different from the, what the Tree Board had initially started with and why and what we changed in a quick?
Yeah, I'll have Courtney address that for you, because I think she worked with them to to make most of those things. So hold on just a moment, we'll see if we can get Courtney on for you.
Good evening.
Hi, Courtney.
Let me see if I can start video here. Howdy. So I have gone through these and we have made several adjustments to reflect the standards as well as to take out any conflicts, such as the recommendation by the city arborist for a code enforcement action, rather than the arborist directing the code enforcement officer, giving notice of what they're doing. So we've tried to correct those kind of conflicts within the, within the statute, within the ordinance, and make them consistent with the other parts of the ordinance as they exist, particularly around taking care of weeds, trees, alley bushes and weeds. And I don't, at this point, see any conflicts between those.
Great, thank you. And then what are the highlighted corrections?
The highlighted portions are actually new language, and that includes the fruit tree language. And then the code enforcement language. The strike-throughs are the removals, and the red are also additions.
Perfect, thank you. Helped to understand it a little more. All right, I'm going to open it to public comments. Do we have any public comments? Let's see. Okay, I don't see any in our chat, but do we have any public comments on ordinance number 2094, first reading? It will be at, in a public hearing at a future date. Any public comment? Okay. Do we have Commissioner comments or questions?
Yeah, Darrell.
Yeah, go ahead.
After being in the Tree Board for several years, this is really a beautiful time to have it and writing exactly what's going to go on. I mean, we have always so many questions. Who takes care of this? Who takes care of that? And finally, we got something that spells it out. So I want to say thanks to everybody involved with it. And Marshall, great opportunity for the Tree Board to have some definition of what goes on. So it's a long time in coming, but it's here, and I think it's very valuable to the community. Takes a lot of guesswork out of who does something. We had a windstorm a few weeks ago and trees were flying down and all kinds of stuff. Who takes care of it? For once and for all, we've got it on paper, and I want to thank everybody for that.
Thank you, Mel. Other Commissioners? Go ahead, Melissa.
Thank you. First, I want to thanks, thank Marshall. I know you've worked so hard on this recently. And Courtney, thank you so much for helping the Tree Board, because we know our boards love it when the staff help them. So thank you for helping to get this done. I just have a couple of questions. And overall, I want to say I'm super excited, just like Mel. I'm really excited about this. I'm really excited about trees in general, but I'm excited about this ordinance. My first question is that section 23-3. I'm wondering why the ordinance has terms for the people on the Tree Board when the rest of our boards have it, not in ordinance, but in, I think, just the policy? I thought we talked when we did the board review about not making that by ordinance, but I don't know if there's like Montana code or any reason why that belongs in here. So it's 23-3 on page 121 of the agenda. And Chair Holbland, I don't know who's the best person to direct that to, if it's And Chair Holton, I don't know who's the best person to direct that to, if it's.
Courtney?
City Attorney, okay.
Yeah. Courtney, can you answer that?
I certainly can. Uh, generally, the the boards terms are set out in your ordinances. And if you want to make any kind of changes, you certainly could, including staggering the terms. But then the bylaws take care of the rest of the information about how they operate. So the ordinance sets out how many and how long, and then the bylaws can take care of almost everything else.
Okay. Thank you. And then is is it typically four years for our boards or is it two years for most boards? I'm on the planning and I know that's different because of the code. So I'm wondering, can you help me remember what the other boards, if it's two year or four year terms or?
There is some variation, but a standard, it's pretty standard for it to be three. And this is a change that was recommended by the tree board and one that I did not recommend that they change. Uh, this, the commission can certainly approve or disapprove that change.
Um, well, I guess before I move on to other questions, Chair Holton, I would be curious to know why they wanted four year terms and why Courtney suggests three. Is that fair to do it this time?
Yes.
I'm not sure if there are any other tree board members on this call. I think Andy Mitchell said he might um log in. I'm not sure if he's one of the call in attendees. So basically, the this ordinance was in the works and I think it actually was before the commission before my first tree board meeting uh in January, February. So I honestly have no idea and um why they asked for that change and it hasn't come up in any of our discussions since then. So I'm sorry, I can't help out with that.
Mel, do you remember as far why that was added in to four years versus three?
No, I don't.
Michael?
So I've reached into the wayback machine from when we started this, so I'm I'm not positive on this. But I think part of it was that there was some difficulty filling tree board um positions. And so they wanted a more stable membership that was longer than most because there wasn't a lot of turnover in the board. And sometimes they had difficulty getting people to fill spots. So I think it was just an attempt to make it a little more stable. I I don't sure if it'll have a huge effect on it, but I think that was the intent behind the original recommendation.
So it should actually be 10 years. Right? That's okay. We we like to keep people. Um, Melissa, you still have the chair. Yeah, I mean, the floor.
So the next question I have is let's see. Oh, I was going to ask because this is new. Um, on page 123, this is one of the things that we talked about that got clarified. Um, 123, the part about how notices would be sent to the city code enforcement officer. I was wondering if we could just have like a little like a little example of what that looks like in practice. Um, this process, since this is new for the people in Livingston, or this would be new for the people in Livingston. Chair, I'm guessing that's for Courtney or Michael, I'm not sure.
So the city code enforcement officer always has the ability to enforce city codes. And this creates um the ability for the city arborist to send notice and to try to deal with it on a more diminished personal level that isn't that seeking enforcement without penalty first. And then if the code enforcement officer needs to follow up with actual penalty, we can do that and then forward it to city court. Um, and then it provides the notice provision in there. So anytime the city arborist is going to ask somebody to make a correction, then a notice of that will go to the code enforcement officer. So then he's on notice that down the road, he may have to do something about it and he can probably drive by, take a look, you know, see what's going on. Um, and they can keep each other informed about whether or not there's a correction that's been made.
Thanks. I'll be real interested in getting updates or hearing how it works when this, assuming that this ordinance goes through some version of it and just seeing how it's working. Thank you. Um, I wanted to get just a little clarification because there's another part on page 125. Um, it has to do with private property. So like when a tree on private property is threatening something. I'm looking for where that is now. I thought it was on page 125. Okay, yeah, it's it's section 23 dash 16. Dead or diseased tree removal on private property. So are we talking about when a tree is threatening public property, like a private tree is threatening public property? Or are we also considering when a private tree is threatening another private property? Would city code enforcement get involved between private property concerns like that?
It could but be either.
Okay.
And there's a a certain amount of discretion that has to be exercised in that. Certainly, the first thing that happens is somebody gets notice so that they can correct it individually without us having to issue a citation or take a corrective action. And I think that this would be particularly helpful when we have some kind of fairly destructive wind event or an early snow where there's lots of limbs down. Um, and if one of those is whether it's across the street, across somebody else's fence, infringing on something somewhere that is a a public a public problem or a private nuisance where and and it's also forward thinking a little bit as far as a a tree district um or Parks and Trees district as that may come forward, where then um there's going to be some measure of need to notify, correct it, enforce if and when that happens.
Thank you. I thought you were going to say the Emerald Ash for someone trees start falling from the beetle. Um, thank you, Courtney. My last, my last question is about the fruit tree section. And you know, Marshall, that I'm excited about this section because it's really about wildlife. Um, and it's about people that like to forage for food. So um my only suggestion, I really like this, would be to make sure we're including other food trees because there's a ton of old trees that grow nuts in Livingston. And I know there's people that forage those in town because they're in my neighborhood. Um, so I think it's really great. I'm really excited about this chapter. And I just want to thank the tree board for working so hard on it for like the last year plus. And Courtney, thanks for your legal expertise to tidy up all of the contradictions that were in it before. And I yield.
All right, thank you. Melissa, are you saying you want to add in the language of nut trees as well?
Yeah, I don't know if it would be more appropriate to say food trees or fruits and nut trees. But I just want to make sure we're including all of the things that people like to forage from, you know, that are dropping on the ground in the fall. Oh, you know, Darrell, the other thing I would say is um I am in favor of the three years instead of the four years for the terms, just because I think it lines up a little better with the rest of our boards, which tend to be shorter, not longer terms.
All right, thank you, Melissa. Um, I don't have a lot of questions tonight. I think I'd like to just state to a couple of things. I am glad that we're to the point tonight of making a decision on this. But we also have a few corrections that I agree with, and I would like to see that as well with the three year, keeping it consistent. It's not to nitpick, it's just for consistency so that across the board um or across the boards, I should say, there we we do have consistency. So it's, it doesn't make the um community member, the committee member wonder, okay, is this a three year, four year, two year, one year? Being consistent will just help for all committees. So I agree. I'd like to see it changed to three. And other than that, I'm just really excited that, like I said, to be at this place of making a decision on this important work. And I really appreciate the time the tree board has put into this document and also the city and working with them to help refine it. So thank you. It takes a lot of work to change um these documents and go through it, so very much appreciated.
Madam Chair, may I chime in?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Darrell, you're breaking up. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Go ahead, Quentin. Michael, can you guys hear me? Okay?
I can hear you and I could hear Quentin, but now I don't hear him at all. So he might have dropped off.
Quentin, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead now.
I have problems with Darrell, so.
Can you hear me, Quentin?
It's um kind of broken up.
Okay, go. I think everyone can hear you. So if you'd like to speak, go ahead and I think we can we should be able to hear you. We'll shoot him a text real quick so that we know he knows we can hear him.
Now, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Mr. Schwartz here.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you just text him and say to go ahead and then we'll um finish out?
Yep, we're sending that to him.
Okay.
Okay, I I got that. I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, um, I I agree with you on the uh three year terms. I like that. The fruit of the tree is fruit of the tree is a nut or, you know, an apple or an orange or a nut. So I think language is fine there, so fruit of the tree is whatever it delivers. I yield.
All right, thank you, Quentin. And Quentin, you might strike, hang up and call back. It might work to get a better um line, but I anyway, we're at the point.
I'm going to do that right now. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we're at the point of, I think, to have a motion on ordinance, ordinance number 2094.
We'll make a motion. We approve ordinance 2094 with the section 23 dash three amended to three year terms.
And leaving the language as uh fruit of the trees is okay?
Yep.
Yeah.
And we have a second by Mel. So a motion by a second by Friedman, roll call please.
Chair Holton?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz? Oh, we'll admit him here. Skip him, Commissioner Friedman?
Four.
Commissioner Maybe?
Four.
Commissioner News? Quentin, we skipped you for votes, but I'm coming back to you. Is he there?
Quentin, can you hear us?
Commissioner Schwartz is four. Um, I'm going to call in. I'm going to dump the uh yeah, I can hear you, but I'm going to, I'm going to call in instead and do it from phone. It just signal sucks here, so. Yeah, I, four.
Right. Motion passes. Thank you. Um, fine, well, Quentin uh tries to get back on or in, Michael, please. So next on our agenda, we have resolution number 4930, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Livingston, Montana, adopting a new impact fee schedule, Mr. Carter.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. So this is again the out the outcropping or the result of us redoing the impact study. And for now that we've accepted the study as part of the library of Livingston documents, we're now on to set the actual fees. This is not an ordinance, it is a resolution. Uh, the one thing I would ask is when you make the motion on this, because there's constantly applications that you move to accept this for all um all future and pending applications. So that means if someone's in the process now, the the new fees will apply to those that are in the process but haven't been uh billed for impact fees yet. Um, and that'll clear up exactly who it applies to. And it'll be from that this point forward, anything that we charge in impact fees will be the new fees. Unfortunately, the in your packet, you only have an example of what it would do to a a household. Um, and that is on page, I think, 135, let me flip there. Uh, no, 137 is the example of the differences and then a comparison to Bozeman. But the actual fees themselves are in the addendum. And unfortunately, they got split in the addendum as well. It's the first page and the last page of the addendum. Uh, the first page gives you the uh impact fees for police, fire, transportation and parks. And then the last page gives you the impact fees for sewer and water based on water connection size. The staff's recommendation for the impact fees as listed uh on those pages is for the full amount that the uh study produced. Um, they are, it is a significant increase from where we were. Uh, but it is clear that if we want to increase infrastructure to handle the amount of development that is already occurring, um, we're going to need to charge larger impact fees. A great example of that is, there's actually two examples of that happening currently. One is the sewer sewer collection system where it crosses Fifth Street from the north side is currently undersized and is going to need to be um expanded. And because we have not been charging uh impact fees in some of those developments, we do not have the impact fees to pay for that project. Uh, additionally, the same things happen with development on the south side to the south of the interstate. Uh, the lift station there that's by Matt's Meats, if you've ever seen it right there on the side of the road, is also now undersized for the type of development that's going in. That will also have to be upgraded. And again, there's not the impact fees uh in the impact fees accounts to pay for those upgrades. So we're going to have to come up with a different, a different way to pay for those upgrades. And there are different ways and we can discuss those at a future time. But that's just an example of what we will have to continue to do um if we do not charge impact fees that will help pay for some of those products. And so that's why the staff is recommending the full amount of impact fees and we can answer specific questions on that if you'd like. But if you do look on page 137, and that's why we included that, you can see the price goes up significantly in impact fees for a single family, much more so for multifamily or special development. Another thing that that having the full impact fee available to charge is up until this point, we've had very few incentives for developers to change things to the way we want. Uh, being able to waive or uh change impact fees to influence development is something that will we would have the ability to do if we had larger impact fees. Right now, the waiver of impact fees is insignificant to developers, and so it doesn't give us um very much leverage when we want to negotiate anything. Uh, this will help in that aspect, but more importantly, it'll help pay for those infrastructure projects that we need to do as we continue to uh grow inside even even internally to the city of Livingston. As you can see, some upgrades have to take uh place close to this, the city core. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on those issues for you.
I think we'll start with public comment and then commissioners' questions and comments. Uh, do we have any public comment, comment on resolution 4930? Any public comment?
Uh, Jonathan Hedinger, uh, 519 West Park Street. I um just wanted to say I think it's great that um we're raising the impact fees. It seems really worthwhile. And I'm glad that we're recommending um such a large increase. I think that um it makes it makes a lot of sense to make, to help make new development pay for itself. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any other public comment? All right, we'll close it to, wait, I guess Barb, Barb Oldershaw. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Barb Oldershaw, 514 North G. I just wanted to also appreciate that the conversation that's been had both in the presentation for this and then also in talking about the workforce housing presentation, the understanding that causing, having the development fees does give you some, some leverage in terms of encouraging more have, some leverage in talking with developers about different kinds of developments you might want to have. So thank you for taking that into account. Faith tells me that you're not seeing my video and I apologize for that.
That's all right. We just see half of you, Barb, but thank you.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Thank you, Barb. Any other comment? Okay, well. Let me double check. No one. So do I have any comments from the commission? Well, Warren, do you want to go first this time?
Sure.
All right.
I think it's something that's, you know, should have happened quite a while ago to get us back into economic reality in terms of paying for city services. So I, I think it's a very positive move. Thank you.
Thanks, Warren. Put you on the hot seat there. Melissa, I see that you had something to say.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think that the accepting the study as it was written is the right move. I think the people in Livingston have made it known they want new development to pay its own way, new market value development to pay its own way. And I completely agree with Michael that this is an incentive as we move forward after our growth policy to help incentivize the kind of development we need in Livingston. It's just a tool in our toolbox.
Thank you, Melissa. Any other commissioners? All right, I, I'm going to just reiterate what both of you said in that we have worked on this for a long time as a city and a community and I look forward to this document and the changes that will apply to immediately, very quickly to develop. So I'm looking forward to it and are we ready for a motion unless there's any others?
I make a motion. We pass resolution 4930.
And then it will need to say future.
Impending.
Unless, Mel, can you restate it that way?
What do you want to do?
Um. Courtney, tell us how to say it. Thank you.
Of course. If you could make a motion to pass resolution 4930 applicable to all pending and future applications for plans and permits.
So moved.
I knew he was gonna do that. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Friedman. That can, by maybe. Roll call, please.
Karen Hoagland?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Four.
Commissioner Freeman?
Four.
Commissioner Maybe?
Yes.
Commissioner News?
Yes. Motion passes. Next resolution is resolution number 4931, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, authorizing the city manager to sign all documents required for the adoption and implementation of a consecutive system agreement with the View Vista Community, Inc. Mr. Cardes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So now we're to the actual agreement that we were talking about during the scheduled public comment with Neighbor Works. And I think Shannon's on and I'm gonna have him talk to you a little bit about the questions you had earlier about what it means and what the process would be going forward. So Shannon, if you could chime in.
Can everybody hear me okay?
We can.
Yes.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for allowing me to talk on this consecutive services agreement. I will add to what Mr. Domino mentioned earlier in scheduled public comment. This consecutive service agreement accomplishes two things. It allows the View Vista community to comply with state law and State Department of Environmental Quality testing standards for a public water system. So although View Vista is connected to the city's water system with a two-inch meter, the system within the trailer park serves over more than 25 people and has more than 15 connections. So it is defined as a, as a public water system within the city's public water system, if that makes sense. So the agreement will put those testing requirements from DQ under the city's purview, which we already do. The agreement very clearly states that the city of Livingston will not be responsible for the operation and maintenance of the private water system within the, the View Vista community. And in essence, what this does is this allows, this agreement allows View Vista to apply for grants and loans for improvements of that water and sewer system internal to the development. So there is a non-compete clause, so as the commission may be aware that we currently have a treasure state endowment grant for extending sewer to the civic center. And we also have a CBDG planning grant for extending sewer to Green Acres. In situations like that, View Vista would not compete against the city's projects, but if, if we do not have a grant or a, or a low-interest loan application that we're applying for, it would give View Vista community the opportunity to do that. Now, how I envision this working and working with Neighbor Works is at some point utilizing these low-interest grants and loans, View Vista could look at extending water and sewer mains within the development and having more standard service connections to each individual unit. And if those water and sewer extensions meet the city's requirements, we would eventually take over the operation and maintenance of that water system within the development through easements to allow us access into that, into the development. So I hope all that makes sense. And if you have any questions, I'd be certain to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Shannon. Let's open it to public comment first and then if you have any questions for Shannon in particular commissioners. So any public comment on resolution 4931? Any public comment? Okay, let's move on to commissioner comments and questions. Does anyone have a question for Shannon? From what he's presented so far or comment? Go ahead, Melissa.
The question I asked earlier of Shannon, I think Shannon, I'm not sure if Shannon was on or not, but I'm sure he knows the issues since he was involved in Green Acres that I'm thinking of.
Can you restate that question for Shannon, just in case?
Yeah, Shannon, I'm just real curious about annexation way down the road for this property and is this one, it sounds like from what you said, that this is one of the steps that keeps the property affordable in terms of allowing them to go after funding sources or grants, whatever the case may be, that helps get them up to where they need to be when eventually annexation potentially happens in the future. I guess that's what's on my mind because it's a unique property. They're trying to protect affordable housing for the people that live there. And we know that it's on a list to be annexed sometime in the future. And we also know that the costs can go up after annexation for the reasons that you already mentioned.
So I would answer your question like this. View Vista Trailer Park would be, is very similar or exactly the same situation that we dealt with, with Green Acres. They currently are connected to the city's water system and sewer system. There is a clause in this consecutive services agreement and it's my understanding that Mr. Domino and staff at Neighbor Works have reviewed this and, and, and in previous discussions have no issues with annexation if and when that occurs.
So is this a step in keeping it affordable?
I, absolutely. I, absolutely. And I think that's where Neighbor Works excels in this type of development. You know, they have invested a lot of money in looking at assessing the property and the infrastructure within that development. And obviously utilizing low-interest loans and grants that the city is eligible for through, again, rural development, CBDG, treasure state endowment, the, the revolving loan fund. They could, they could spread the cost of any infrastructure or utility extensions within that development and spread that out over a period of time to make it affordable for all the, the residents within the community.
Thanks, Shannon. I know that's been a big concern for people with this particular property, community members at large. So thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Madam Chair?
Yep. Go ahead, Quentin.
So what we're referring to on this agreement is only to the rental properties that around that premises has nothing to do with the mobile home units. I guess I'm asking a question in there. Can anybody answer that?
I can answer it, Quentin, if that's okay.
Yeah, thanks.
This, this consecutive services agreement applies to all the dwelling units within the View Vista resident-owned community. So it includes the trailers and the apartments.
Okay. They're currently on city water but not city sewer?
I appreciate you bringing that up. They are on city water and they are on city sewer. And just for everybody's information, in 2014, the city partnered with the county on the Fleschman Creek Restoration Project. And so all the sewer mains on the south side of Fleschman Creek that serviced the high school, Sleeping Giant Middle School, east side, View Vista Trailer Park is all brand-new sewer mains that, that flow into a brand-new lift station near the Mike Webb Park in the Splash Park. And the city serves water in, in Main Street and all the water main crossings across Fleschman Creek have all been updated in 2014 as well. So we have good infrastructure that we connect to View Vista community.
Thanks, Shannon. Yeah, I just wanted to just clarify a point on Green Acres. They currently are not on city sewer, on city water only. And that's the reason why we were able to annex them at that time. That's all I have. I yield, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Quentin. Any other commissioner questions? I guess I will just end it with, again, I look forward to the work that is being done and will be done in this area of our community. And I think this is one of the steps we should take to get there. This is an important area for a lot of people and I think having all of this support through the, the organization as well as the city working on infrastructure with the county shows them that they are part of our community and that it's multi-use. If we're talking about multi-use, there's a lot of different housing units in, in that small area, including, you know, small studio apartments and, and homes, small homes. So I'm looking forward to it. Looking forward to the progress with this project. All right. Anything else before we move it to a motion? Do I have a motion from the commission on resolution 4931?
I make a motion. We pass resolution 4931.
Okay, I'll second that.
We have a motion by Friedman and a second by Schwartz. Roll call, please.
Karen Hoagland?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Four.
Commissioner Freeman?
Four.
Commissioner Maybe?
Yes.
Commissioner News?
Four.
Motion passes. So we are an hour and a half in. We'll take our five-minute break then move on to our last three action items. Five minutes is on the timer. Everyone, go ahead and mute. All right, we're back. Has everyone returned? Okay, we're gonna move on to our action items. Tonight, we have three action items. First one, I guess I need some clarification on this one, but on Livingston Area Chamber of Commerce Fee Waiver Request for reconsideration. From what I read, it should we table that or not address this because it's, we're not doing, they're not having this stroll downtown?
I would like to address this.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure. I feel like from what I was reading from letters and such.
The newspaper article came out like a day early. We had just made an assumption after the last vote was put over, was held, that we had a backup plan and the backup plan is what they went live with, but basically, you know, after today's governor's announcement at 3:30 today, you know, I still have businesses asking if we're gonna be able to have the stroll downtown. So we had to make a backup plan. We have two weeks before the stroll. We still have Santa coming to town, 400 gifts to give away to children. So, you know, we have to think of, you know, the safest, most best possible way to make this happen. So it's gonna be an outside event. If the commission chooses to not vote and allow us to close the streets to have it in the middle of the street downtown, then we, we have a backup plan to have it on private property. And it'll all be an outside event. So it just won't be downtown in the middle of the streets. And, you know, I mean, I have a, a long list of what I would like to bring up, but, you know, I could have answered all of your questions at the last meeting, but I was on mute and I was trying to chat it in there that I had your answers like the porta potties and how to keep people safe. It's a masked event and the governor's statement simply states, or the mandate simply states that the amount of people, if it is, if you're not able to be dispersed, so. A, number one masked event, and that there is a limit of people per an event if you are not able to be able to be socially distanced. And this event, which we all knew was going to be socially distanced, so just like shopping is today. So that's kind of where I'm at with it. You know, the chamber has always worked with the city on these events. The reason why I had to come with in front of you in the first place commissioners is that for decades, there was never a fee for this event. The Chamber of Commerce, way before my term, had never paid anything. A few years back, three years, I believe, there was a hundred dollar fee, and now we're up to $750. So I ask again, this is another one of those things that I asked the commission to please, please look into the fees for these events that you, as a commission and as the city, has always sponsored the chambers moving forward. But that, you know, you know, that we could actually work together and to be able to have these events in the future. And we all know that these things are going to be a little crazy right now, but still being able to work together to be able to create these events and still have Santa in our town and, and some sort of celebration. And also, you know, keep in mind the economy of our community downtown. They're really hurting right now. And we're doing everything we can to show people in this community and in this county how they can still shop and keep a viable community. So that is what I wanted to say to you before you passed your decision on the voter non-vote that didn't happen last time. And I appreciate your time on this.
All right. Thank you, Leslie. Can I ask a few questions just to start? And then we'll have public comment, obviously, and other commissioner comments. So just to clarify, Michael, this is about a fee waiver, not a street closure.
That's correct.
So we're, did, did we, as a city, communicate that we were against the street closure? This is a decision based on street closure?
No.
Well, I'm confused, I guess, Leslie, because I didn't, I I think there was some missing info last time as far as some details on the event, not so much about the street closure. I just wanted to make sure that I understood that. And then, Michael, the governor's declaration today? 25 people total? Is that right?
It is limited to 25 people if social distancing could not be maintained.
Was there any expectation in that? I did read just the quick document on it, but is there any expectation on what, how does social distancing happen? Or anything, is there any guidance?
Just the original guidance that the social distancing is still required six feet between participants. And the standard procedures as far as social distancing are still being observed. So there's no change there. The only changes today were the 25 limit, 25 person limit, if, if you could not social distance, or it was expected that social distancing would not be observed. You know, for whatever reason, if it was a concert or whatever, and you don't, even if they could, if you didn't expect them to, then it should not be, should not move forward. And then the rest of the announcement today was more to do with bars and restaurants.
Okay.
And masks.
Yeah.
Masks for everybody. Yeah.
Countywide, or I mean statewide. So then Leslie, just another question on that then, how how do you see the social distancing happening? I mean, I know it took us about a month and a half to figure it out at the school level. I'm going to be honest, it's not easy.
Well, again, the, the whole part of, you know, what the board came up with, and also talking with community businesses is that when you're, I mean, they're already shopping, they're already using the park, you know, the sidewalks. And by having the streets closed, it allows people to flow over into the street, which is what the health department talked about. Dr. Desnick was pretty, you know, adamant about that part being if anything like this were to take place, you'd have to have room for more people to roam. Number two, this was not going to be a nighttime event. We were moving this into the daytime. Instead of being crammed into a three hour event, this was going to be just an open air shopping event, basically. So this is not one of the typical Christmas strolls that we've had over the years. This was very scaled back and simply by closing the streets, you would allow more people to roam freely with more space between them. Also, having more time, kind of like a car show, where you have more time to come and go. So you don't come all at once. And then again, with Santa not being with any physical contact with Santa and Frosty.
All right. Well, thank you.
Absolutely. I just wanted to clarify a lot of that with you guys.
We appreciate it. Any other commissioner comments at this moment? I know I sort of asked a few just clarifying things, but do we want to continue with commissioner comments before I open it up? Or vice versa?
Commissioner Schwartz, I'll weigh in if you want.
Okay, go ahead.
I guess what I want to say, you know, I'm, you know, waving the C and stuff like that. I'm, I'm not, I don't want to condone this activity. I think it's irresponsible at this time. Cases are only getting worse and stuff like that, you know. I'm always in favor of a fee waiver for the, the chamber. Anytime they have an event going on, but at this time, I, I think it's irresponsible. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Quentin. Other commissioners, before we open it to public?
Commissioner Mayby, I I've spoken to a number of business owners downtown, and I'm going to say five or six. One of them figures that they'll be losing approximately $10,000 by, in that one night, and definitely doesn't want it to happen. We've all seen how, regardless of what the rules are, we've all seen either in Town and Country or Albertson's or wherever, there are people who just will not obey them. They will not obey the mask rule. They will not obey the numbers of people who can safely occupy the space. So again, like I said last time, the risk reward ratio is, is pretty bad. I would not be in favor of, of condoning the event. Thank you.
Thank you, Warren. Commissioners. Okay, let's open it to public comment. Is there any public comment on the action item to request the fee waiver? No public comment? Okay. Wait, I see. Let's see. Nope. There are no public comments in the chat or requests, I should say. All right. So moving on to last with any other commissioner. We normally don't do that, do both, or flip it. But go ahead, Melissa.
Chair Hoiberg, can you just please clarify what exactly it is we'll be voting on?
Michael, would you help put that into, just speak? City speak.
Sure. As the, as the resolution is written, this is a vote on the fee waiver. So it's not a vote on whether or not the, the streets close. It's simply a vote on whether or not the commission wishes to waive the fees associated with that closure.
And, and the event would be the one that you're talking about, though, with this, we're not voting on streets closed, but we're talking about a fee waiver for the streets closed event.
Right. Those are the fees associated are for the street closer, closure itself, and for some of the associated other support items such as garbage cans.
Okay. Thank you. And Chair Hoiberg, I just want to acknowledge and echo what Commissioner Mayby said, that I've only received negative feedback at this time opposed. So, thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Melissa. All right, Mel, anything?
No, I'm okay.
Okay. I will also reiterate, I haven't had any positives come to me in, over the past couple of weeks. You know, one of my major concerns is that, I mean, we did have a big shift with the 25 today, and I think that makes me worried that that, I mean, should we move this forward and accept it? And then by accepting the fee waiver, then it's also stating that we agree with having that many people potentially for that, many people to be downtown. I'm a huge supporter of this stroll, and I attend every year and have since I moved here. But I think things shifted very quickly recently, and there's major concerns by a lot of people on the safety. And as a city commissioner, I question by supporting the fee waiver, if that makes me look like I'm supporting the, the event as well. And I can't support an event that has hundreds of people when it is actually against the governor's order. So it's, yeah, major concerns of it being a super spreader. So that's my thoughts on it. Any last thoughts from my, from the commissioners? All right. I guess one other thing, there has never been a time that we didn't support this in the time I've been here. But it, there wasn't COVID a year ago or two years, five years. So, are we, for a motion?
For a motion.
Quentin?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to, wait, do I have to make it an affirmative? But this is a approve deny, right? So I, I can do it in the negative.
No, you'll say it in the positive.
Okay.
A motion to approve.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the fee waiver. On consent item A, or wait.
Action item A, yep.
Yeah, action item A, I'm sorry.
So we have a motion. Do we have a
Second.
Right. We have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Mayby. Roll call, please.
Chair Hoiberg.
No.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Against.
Commissioner Friedman.
No.
Commissioner Mayby.
No.
Commissioner News.
No.
Motion fails. Okay, now, we have discuss, approve, deny CARES Act funding options. Michael, and I can just preface that we did ask that this item be put on the agenda regularly as we clip through the work of planning and allotting the funding. So it might not mean that we're addressing everything tonight. Everything on a list or everything in general of, of community wants and, and commission wants, city wants. Just want you to know that we have, we plan to continue with discussions on this item or this action item for the foreseeable future, at least a couple more meetings minimum. Michael.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And you're absolutely right. I just put this on the agenda as a placeholder if you, if you wish to talk about it tonight. I did make a couple of recommendations for this evening, just for your discussions. You can take them or leave them or go to other issues. It doesn't really make a difference. The only one I think that warrants probably immediate attention is the Emerald Ashmore one. That grant is due by this Friday. The application. And if we've identified the matching funds for that, then they can say that in the application, which makes it a much, much stronger application. So that would be the only one that I think is, is absolutely time critical at this point. The other ones were just ones that I thought were going to need to be, to be purchased one way or another. They're either replacement for gear that's outdated and overdue, and the money's going to have to be spent at, at some point. And then I threw the, the recycling area one in there, just because that has had some strong public support throughout both this process and other processes. So those are just for your considerations, but it is completely up to you how you'd like to go through it and which items you'd like to talk about.
All right. Commissioners. I, I guess I will leave it to, let's open it to public comment. And like I said, public, please remember, we will continue to have conversations on this. This isn't an all or nothing. All right. We have Jonathan. Go ahead.
Hi, yeah, Jonathan Hedinger, 519 West Park Street. I sent a written comment that highlighted much of what I would like to say, but I just kind of wanted to reiterate the main points. I think that this is an exciting opportunity to have a million dollars that could possibly be used to help people. I think that right now, a lot of the projects you've approved already have been, are helpful and great, and I thank you for that. And I think that some, that going forward with the Emerald Ashmore things, grant match, sounds great. And I think the entire community would also support expanded recycling hours. The, but I guess I wanted to say that with slightly less than half of the money left, I think it would be prudent to, prudent and important to help to look at this money and how it might help people directly. And I think that it would be worthwhile to potentially set up a new process or a certain process to kind of help figure out a good way to get this money into the hands of people that are helping people affected by the pandemic. And the two potential ways that I think you could move forward would be for the city to issue a request for proposals for the CARES Act money from local social services organizations. And, or organize like a task force of local citizens or stakeholders to kind of discuss and prioritize local needs and opportunities. I know the health department today was helping do the CASPER survey to see how the community is being affected by the pandemic. And I think it, as Dr. Desnick said at the last meeting, it might be worthwhile to wait for those results before spending the rest of the money. I wanted to just say thank you for putting a social worker on this list. I think a great way to go forward with that would be to give money to a social services organization like Aspen or someone like that as seed money to start the social worker program. And then also, I think it would be really prudent to earmark a significant amount of money for growth policy implementation, including things like a downtown master plan, a climate action plan, neighborhood plans, or zoning or rewrites, the stuff that will help people dealing with the housing crisis that is a part of the pandemic. So thank you for your consideration. Thank you for doing, for giving all this money to help people. And I look forward to more discussion of how this money will continue to help members of the community.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any other public comment?
Yeah, hi.
Hi. Who is this?
I'm Denise Fisher. I'm at 609 West Geyser, and I did write each of you. I'm Denise Fisher. I'm at 609 West Geyser, and I did write each of you all a note with some of my concerns. And I totally appreciate what Jonathan just said. I guess ah, given that the title of this is CARES Act money, it just seems like that should be a little bit more of the emphasis. And I realize all the things ultimately end up helping and supporting the city as a whole. However, I feel like especially what we're going into and not knowing what is coming down the pike for the community business-wise, health-wise, or Health Department, I think what Dr. Desnick was recommending, the survey would be really helpful. And as I recommended or suggested in my note, is is so many of the places that I look at for supporting in this community is like Aspen and the Food Resource Center, the schools themselves, and how are they holding up with all of these things? Or and or other businesses that might be hurting? How how are senior citizens or anyone else affected by their heating bills this winter, depending on what we have going on? So can that go through HRDC and they offer support? Or, you know, like you're talking about a solar system for the city building. Is there a way to have some little funding that instead of just continuing to pay people's heating bills, maybe you can insulate some of their roofs or something? I mean, I think this is a good opportunity to think outside the box. But it seems like we're still in for a long haul here, and I think the schools have a ways to go. So some of those items, and I specifically mentioned the parking lot next to in it marks In-N-Out, and I don't know the history on why that's there. And, you know, maybe you could talk about that. I didn't see where the history of like the fenced-in dog park was, or, you know, how some of these things made the list, or if they could be somehow prioritized. So, you know, for those of us who aren't as familiar with some of the things, I can appreciate a new police car. I can appreciate, you know, maybe security cameras. But again, this is for CARES Act. And and I guess I would think maybe some, a third of the money could be set for those priorities. Or, yeah, how can those other organizations reach out and know that, hey, maybe they're, they could get a little bit of support? So thanks for all of this. I do appreciate what you all do on a weekly, monthly basis here. But anyway, I'm an interested citizen here in town and trying to understand how everyone who is hurting from this can maybe get some help. So thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Other public comment?
Hi, this is Becca Fruckt from 125 South 8th Street. And I wanted to just second a lot of what Jonathan offered. I'm thinking he has some really thoughtful ideas about a collaborative process for this funding that I would, I would totally support. I think if if there is some time, I know some of these things are going to be triggered by some deadlines. I totally, I really appreciate the recommendation around the Ashbore Grant Match. And to Jonathan's point, some of the other allocations that have already been made that directly serve folks. And I know that the city building is something that y'all collectively decided was necessary, but we do have this other windfall. And our community is approaching and has been in, depending on how vulnerable you are in crisis. And to Denise's point, the fact that this is CARES Act funding, using that lens of who is most vulnerable, and in a collaborative process, if we have some time to really listen to the folks who are most impacted, hopefully this Casper survey survey will provide some insight. But time can allow for some real feedback and hopeful, hopefully like intentional listening to those folks who are who are hurting and and the organizations, the stakeholders, we have collective genius in this community, whether it's Aspen or the Livingston Food Resource Center and others who have incredible knowledge of, you know, how we can shore up and support the community during this time. And and some recommendations, maybe some out of the box stuff we haven't thought about, and and perhaps maybe connecting some dots with recommendations that already exist. But I think as a citizen, I would feel so much, I would have a lot more faith in the process if it felt like some of those stakeholders were at the table. And especially these folks who have been working in the community for a long time. So I think Jonathan has a list that's really admirable. And hopefully you'll have some time to review that. And I really appreciate that this is a longer process, too, that there's going to be more time. And, yeah, I think that's, you know, I've said this before. This kind of allocation opportunity is a is a value statement. I think some of the values we've already expressed in the allocations are really wonderful, and I hope we can continue down that path of this lens of direct service and who's most vulnerable. And to Denise's point, too, I think when you have longer time to and it and hopefully allow for maybe like these requests for proposals and some community discussion, then there's more understanding about, okay, well, this is the why behind a fenced-in dog park or some of these other things that exist. I know folks can show up at these meetings, but the more outlets, the more opportunities for input, especially when it comes to something like this, the true privilege of being able to provide funding right now when things are feeling really tight and scarce. There is this abundance in this opportunity. And so I hope, yeah, that we can really pursue a collaborative process that centers are most vulnerable and take some time to listen to those most impacted. Thank you.
Thank you, Becca. All right, any other public comment?
I have a comment. Hi, I'm Kate Puller, just from 103 Altair. I would like to kind of reiterate just what everyone else was is saying about the value statements and social service departments and organizations really helping provide direct services right now. And just to clarify as well, there are a lot of organizations that I know about in town that are providing existing programs, you know, that they do year after year. But that need to be you know, increased exponentially, because the need is so just in talking to the Livingston Food Resource Center, I know service use is up 200%. I talked to Kelsey today, and they're serving double the amount of people on a Tuesday in November than they usually do. So I would just ask that. I love the out of the box thinking. I love the helping because this is a weird time we've never experienced. But there are tried and true programs that are, that have been helping, are helping, and are helping more recently. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kate.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Kael, and I'm at 702 East Lewis Street. I would just like to support the things that that Jonathan had said previously this evening. I did have the good fortune of reading the note that he sent to you this afternoon, and I think that there's a lot of really good resource information for you there. So I would encourage you to look that over. I would also speak on the need for testing in this community. As our cases have grown, I've heard from countless community members who are finding it increasingly increasingly frustrating just the ability to get a COVID test if they need one. So I'd encourage you to use some of this money if it's to put it towards, to give it to the county health department or whoever that might be to get more tests, perhaps more rapid testing to accommodate our citizens. I know of people that are having to go to Bozeman to get tested. And if we have this money sitting in our coffers and we're not using it as CARES money for COVID testing, it seems a bit absurd. So I would encourage you to look at those possibilities and to push some of that money towards some COVID testing for our community, which is probably very highly needed at this time. Thank you for allowing me my comment, and thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you, Carrie. All right, any other public comment?
This is Michelle Ubiraga at 711 Lockliven Drive. Thank you so much for the putting this on the agenda and giving us time to continue to talk about it, which appreciated. I also want to thank you for the allocation of funding that's already been made to community projects. Of course, funding for parks and trails is always appreciated in our community. We've got tons of support for that. And then the funding for the Warming Center is, I think, incredibly important to the Park County Housing Coalition. And of course, the matching funds for the Tree Board. And then I just want to echo what, you know, you've already heard today, that I I hope that we can continue to move forward with an open and transparent process to ensure that the rest of the funds are directed to the most pristine needs related to the pandemic and the most vulnerable people in our community. So thank you for all you've done.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, any other public comment? Just giving this second to make sure I didn't miss anyone.
I'll go real quick. This is Alexis Van Pooten, 519 West Park Street. I don't really have anything new to add, just that I really like the idea of the like request for proposal. I think there's, I think somebody said, you know, there's a lot of genius in the Livingston community. And to have organizations that are already working on, you know, their expertise is in the needs of of people in the community. And so to be able to take advantage of their expertise and to to reward people who who know what they're doing, I think is would be a really good use of of the money. And I would also like to reiterate my strong support for the Emerald Ashbore Grant. It's really exciting to see, to see that there there's money and coming forward for that because I like trees and I would like to have them, you know, stick around in Livingston. So thanks and, yeah.
Thank you, Alexis. All right, and yet, anyone else? Okay, I don't want to miss anyone, but it looks like everyone that wanted to speak has. So moving on to commissioners. Who wants to start?
Madam Chair.
All right, Quentin, go ahead.
I'll jump in. As, I don't know if everybody can see it, but I'm looking at it on our on our allocation page. And I like going by this. I like the way we're kind of doing this, you know, and rating this as what we need. Everything I see on here in green makes sense to me, with the exception of the automatic gate at the recycling center. I know that'd be a great thing, but at this time, I also recognize the needs of Aspen, which I totally, how I forgot that and the incredible work they do and stuff like that. I'd like to see that kind of money go towards them, especially now, you know, it's got to be incredibly taxing on what they're doing and going through right now. And if we could limit it to these few items tonight, I think that would be a efficient use of time and then continue to whittle away at them. The Emerald Ashbore Grant Match, totally in favor of. I was just spent spent some time in Michigan and saw the devastation that that created there. But fortunately, they have a mixed forest, you know, and with maples and oaks and stuff like that, so you don't miss them as much. But it really a lot of trees are gone there. So I yield at this point. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Quentin. Other commis- All right, Melissa, go ahead.
I, I would take a more cautious approach, a slower approach. I I think we still have a lot of time. It's only November. I'm in favor of the Emerald Ashbore Grant. That's something that's come up in front of us, Emerald Ashbore. I don't even know how many times since I've been a commissioner. Three, maybe? And now there's a way that we can help the community by getting a grant for it, and it's going to be very expensive with the my ash trees we have in town. And that will certainly benefit taxpayers. I'm in favor of it. The rest of it, I feel like we can wait on. Honestly, we're gonna find out more information from the Health Department. We were told at the last meeting near the end of November, the Casper survey results should be available. And then we can have a better sense of what's happening in our community. She said, Dr. Desnick did say that they would also be canvassing Livingston citizens. It's not just outside of the city limit. So I think that would be helpful. And I don't think the items all in green, I mean, that's not a miniscule amount of money. That's about $200,000, which is around a fifth, you know, 20% of what's left of the fund. So it's not a small amount. And I really want more information on a social worker. I mean, we keep hearing that over and over again that that's what the community wants. And so I would like a dollar figure attached to that and a plan. And then the other thing I really want to hear about is, you know, there's all these different jurisdictions right now, and people have a lot of great ideas, but I just don't know what's possible. One of the questions we got in one of the emails was about the Health Department and testing, and is that even possible for us to contribute money to the Health Department and COVID tests? And are we already doing that? So I think that would be another question, maybe directed to the city manager to see if if that is a possibility or if we're already doing that. So I'm in favor just really of the Emerald Ashbore Grant at this time. And then waiting for the Casper survey results. And I want more information on a social worker. Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. Other commissioners?
Chair Hogan?
Go ahead.
Warren, I'd be interested in knowing the bunker gear and the radio replacement. How would that normally be paid for? Is that part of the normal annual budget or how without this care money, how would that normally be financed?
Michael?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So both of them are pretty much financed the same way. The radios are already, the radio replacement is already an item in our strategic plan. It's something that we've identified a couple of years ago that's going to have to take place. That's all just going to have to be capital budgeted out of the general fund. There's really no other funding sources for those. The bunker gear is the same way. While we did get the mill levy for the ambulance service, that doesn't carry over into fire. Fire is still a general fund item. So all that would come out of the general fund anyway. One of the, as we went through and looked for things that were capital purchases that we would have to make, we did identify that some of the bunker gear was outdated that we were actually not aware of. So that was, there was more of a need there than we anticipated. But both of those would be general fund items. So, and I guess that's a a nuance to this that is is kind of hard to get across. We could spend that out of the general fund, but that would just take the money off the top of what's extra for the reserve, right? It doesn't matter if you spend it out of the general fund or out of this money that we've identified. It's the same pool. There isn't a special CARES Act fund that we're pulling this money out of. And this money isn't money that has to be spent on CARES Act items. This is money that was already spent on CARES Act items and then was refunded to the city through the CARES Act program. So this was this money that was already spent mainly on law enforcement and either fire or ambulance activities. And then those salaries for those workers, firefighters, paramedics, and police officers were, was refunded to the city. So this all came back from fire and police department and half of what just comes back for dispatch, we distribute half of it back to the county because they fund half of it. So that's, that's where the money is actually coming from. We distribute half of it back to the county because they fund half of it. So that's, that's where the money is actually coming from. To answer, I I think similarly or the same tax, Commissioner Newt's question about testing, there's an entirely different pot of CARES Act money for testing. And I don't think it's a money issue that's that's holding back rapid testing in the county. I think it's availability and or our ability to process those tests as far as actually have people out there to take them. So I don't think that's a funding issue. Likewise, there's an entirely different pot of CARES Act money for the schools. They're applying for that in their own. The health department is applying for a different pot of CARES Act money for themselves. The county has a pot of CARES Act money that they are, they are distributing. I think even from, if you look at the Department of Commerce's website, many of our local nonprofits have already received money through CARES Act programs. I think to include Aspen and the Food Resource Center and PCEC and the Chamber have all received some form of CARES Act funding for this year's activities. So there's, there's a whole bunch of CARES Act money out, out there, is in a lot of different pots. And a lot of people have already taken advantage of it, and I think that's great, and I think we should take advantage of this, as many different aspects of that as we can. So, it gets kind of complicated when, where you want to spend it, that's, I mean, it's general fund money now because it's been refunded to us, so it can be spent anywhere. But there's also other, other CARES Act funds that we could tap into. A lot of this comes from the fact that the state of Montana in the original CARES Act bill was given 1.25 billion. And then the Secretary of Commerce, and I don't think they decreed it, but they strongly encouraged forty percent of that to be passed down to local governments, whether that's county or or city. If you do that by population, Livingston's share would have been somewhere around four million. But the state isn't doing it by population share. They're doing it mainly by refunding first responder salaries. So that's kind of the, the big picture of where it's all coming from, if that's helpful.
Thank you.
Warren, anything else? Yet?
Oh, no, that was it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other commissioners, Mel, I guess.
Darrell.
Go ahead, Mel.
This is, this is very difficult. The thing is that we started out looking at a place for a new city hall for the city commission, which I'm really in favor of. You got a long list here. I want to take care of the things that we, that's the, that's the main thing I want to take care of. Make sure we do that. And like you say, there's so many other things down here, and they're coming from other directions for these organizations. I still like the original idea of the building. Now, how you analyze all this stuff? You know, that, you know, that I don't know. But I would like to take care of that and not lose that opportunity at the moment. And I'm open to all the rest of the, the list here. So, how that fits in, how we attack it, I don't know. We're, you know, we're not going to deal with this whole list tonight, I don't think. Well, that's going to change. So, if you understand what that drift is, I want to take care of the main thing that we started out with. And make sure that we take care of that and then negotiate this other stuff. I have no problem with it.
Thank you, Mel.
I keep seeing it slipping. The more we talk about it, that we're getting away from the main thing that we started with. So, it's just my, my thing.
All right, thank you. I guess I do, I do have a few things to yes, discuss or point out. I've, I've had about five to six people make comments about the importance of a dog park, the dog park, the dog park kind of thing. And it, and it's in a sense of their disregard, or they don't think that it's of value. And I think one of the hard parts with our CARES Act funding money, and I think, thanks, Michael, for clarifying that. Because I work in an entity that there's some details to CARES funding that is different than we expect. And so having that clarified helped, I think, me even more and as well as I think our community. But going back to the, you know, it's what we, what do we value? So, I think one of the things that I'm hearing in comments and, you know, not against or for anything is that we all value very different things. And I think what I like about our list and where I feel like there are things that we don't even know that we would like to fund yet, and I do appreciate that those comments being made, like, you know, slow, methodical get because there's things that we don't know about yet that we, we need to consider. But historically, our community's been hyper focused on parks and trails and a huge group of us, and there has been also a want for a dog park for way more years than I've been on the commission. So, it's a value of our, to our community and during COVID, outdoors use of our, of our beautiful outdoors and experiencing our outdoors, I think is very important. It's the only time you can take your mask off, for example. But I think there is a lot of history behind these requests that I know that other people don't always know about. And I know that it's hard to have all that history behind every, everything because of just the time and process. But, uh, you know, everything from the building that has been an issue that, you know, we have five different locations for for where we keep our, or have our staff. The county needs more space, the city needs more space for, there's four officers in one tiny office during COVID. You know, and not safe. And those are the kinds of things that are part of the history of our information. And I don't want us to forget that there is always history. It's not just a, like, one, one, like, comment that, oh, we need this. There's, there's reasons these are on the list, and you can see it in our strategic plan as well. Doesn't mean all of them are going to happen. No, not necessarily. That's part of what we're working through with our, with the community and the commission and the requests, which I'm loving. But I, you know, I really appreciate it, the other part of the collaborative process of looking at this, which I think this has been, just the, the fact that we continue to have this as a standing item on our agenda. And we're listening and hearing from a lot of people, and it, we really appreciate it. I know when I've, like, checked in with the commissioner too in the past couple of weeks, we're all appreciating that. I agree with one, one thing in particular from what Melissa said about the social worker. I'd like to see some detail in that, Michael, coming up. We did add it to the list, but we also need the detail and, and, you know, what are the possibilities with it? And what, you know, what are, what may be needed? It might take some time and some work. But, you know, is it through another entity? Is it working with an entity like Aspen or someone else or the county or working with more than just the county and Aspen, and there's other people involved or other groups? But I'd like to see that just in detail. Another one of the issues that was, or one of the items is that, I know I'm talking a lot tonight, but these are very important things for me. Is the gate. So that is a long history of want from our community as well. Like, our wish list from the community of getting into the recycling center, being able to access it because it's very hard to get there if you are working ten, twelve hours a day. Like, I know my husband and I do, we can never get there. We had to get the service because recycling matters to us. But I'm, I believe it does matter to our community, and it is on the wish list of quite a few people, not all of them, as we hear from some concerns tonight. But it is also a big want for a lot of people to have access because recycling matters to them and to our community. And then as far as other items and recommend, recommended on the list. I'm a little leery of jumping in too quickly, just like Melissa, but I do agree with the, the Emerald Dash. Again, it's a grant issue that the sooner we get it, the better. Sooner we have that funding, the match, then we can have a better chance with getting additional funding to, another issue that's been on our tongues for years and years and years. And there's probably a hundred people that will call me tomorrow and say, why would you even care about those trees? Okay, but again, it's about collective look at what's important to us and finding middle ground in what we think is important. So, I guess tonight we have to make a motion or move something forward. My copy is not in color. Could you put it back up for us, Faith? So, oh, Michael, one question. Bunker gear, can you give us a little more detail? I'm, I'd like to understand that.
Sure, I think the easiest way to understand bunker gear is firefighter suit. It's, it's literally the pants, coat, helmet, shielding around the neck that they wear when they go into fires. It's the, when you, when you imagine a firefighter, it's what they're wearing externally.
Okay, thank you very much. So commissioners, is there any last feedback on, on the list? And I know, Melissa, you already stated your feelings on it. On what you, or how we'd like, you'd like to proceed tonight. Anyone else on? Okay, go ahead, Melissa.
Can we just, Commissioner Friedman did bring something up, and it, maybe it would be good for an update before we talk about possible motions. And that was about the building that passed with the four one vote last week, or two weeks ago, excuse me. So, I just want to acknowledge that he said that and maybe get like a brief update on where the process is for that purchase.
Because it's on the list.
Yeah, it's on the list.
Michael?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. So, in the last meeting, you guys gave me authorization to start negotiations on that. We have been conducting those. We have an initial agreement signed currently. We should get the, the final details of that ironed out in the next few days, and we'll give you the final, final outcome of those negotiations. But I think it should go through here in the next three to four days.
So just to acknowledge that that has already been decided, that part of the process, and it's moving forward. Thank you, Chair Hogan.
Thank you, Melissa. So, I mean, one of my concerns is truly do not have a lot of time. I know it feels like we do, sort of, but in government talk, six months is not a lot of time. And then we have a month of holidays and have COVID blowing up in our community. And that may stop process, and we may have some problems with that, with the the impact of, of closure, for example, if, if it gets really bad. It's, if, you know, I hate to even say the word closure. You know, I just feel like the time we have is very short, and my concern is that if we delay too many items for too long, we're going to be scrambling at the end. Just because, I mean, we've already spent a, a month on it. And, or almost a month, and we are just an item or two in, you know, really, a couple of items in. So, where do we go from here? We got to give a recommendation tonight to the staff, or, yeah, to the staff as to how we want to proceed. Did we make individual motions to each of them at this time? Or if anyone wants to make a motion to recommended items or to a recommended item? Can we do that? Courtney, are you on?
I am, and you can do them individually if you'd like.
Okay.
Are you second in motions?
Yeah, that's what I was saying. If we could do an individual motion for, you know, start with an item, since there seems to be some concerns.
So, I'll make a motion that we allocate fifteen thousand dollars for the Emerald Ash Bor grant match.
Do we have a second? Here we have a motion by Newt, second by maybe, roll call please.
Commissioner Schwartz? Commissioner Schwartz? Commissioner Freeman?
For.
Commissioner, maybe?
For.
Commissioner Newt?
For.
Motion passes. Do we have a motion on any of the other items?
I would make a
Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to make a motion that we could postpone until the next meeting when we have the, and get the results of the Casper survey, potentially in conjunction with this action item.
Melissa, would you mind if we just get the Casper survey, like, what it means and what it's looking for that survey? And you have little arms sticking out of your head while you speak, Melissa?
Mom, Commissioner Lang?
Explain the Casper survey in detail or, in, in, I guess not detail, an overview for the public so we have everyone understand. I don't know who that would be, Michael?
I don't think I know enough about the process to, to give you any good information. I do know it's, it's meant to be statistically significant. I'm not sure exactly how they're accomplishing that. And I'm not sure what questions are asking, but hopefully if it's out by the end of November, we can look at it and then, and see what kind of information it gives us.
Anyone else have any more information on it? Yeah, to be honest, other than it being brought up, I'm not sure of much that I've heard on detail of what the data will reflect. The impact of it, I know on our community, but I don't know to what depth. All right.
And I, actually, I'm working on it. So, I don't know if Alexa can talk about it.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, basically, so, the survey is asking questions about, it's centered on COVID and how people's lives has, have changed in reaction to it, mostly centered on like economic impacts. So can people pay rent? Can they afford food, electricity? And also on like, you know, job impacts and also on like mental health. So, you know, have people been, you know, have, has their family been more stressed or less stressed? All those sorts of things. So that's like, sort of the two main avenues are like, mental health and economic security. And we're hoping to have the actual, like, boots on the ground surveying part of it done this weekend with a hundred and twelve responses all, from all over the county. So not just Livingston, but all of Park County. And then the data gets sent up to the state and the, like, state GIS, the state library and their team. And they basically take all of our paper surveys and then they, they produce a report from it that sort of summarizes what, you know, the impacts on the community based off of our survey are.
Great, thank you. Very, very helpful. All right, um, do we have, then let's move it, move it on to any other motions for tonight.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm not, recommended areas that have been highlighted. that have been highlighted, especially concerning our first responders. I'd like to make motion to approve the LPD radio replacement. Reserve fire bunker gear and LFR bunker gear.
So what is that total on that? Just
Hundred and eighty.
Hundred and eighty?
Yes, hundred and thirty.
I can't see it.
Hundred and thirty, yeah.
Can't see it, so I apologize in my copy. Um, okay.
Yeah, I think it's important that we address those issues sooner than later. I know, you know, they're part of the budget and will be part of the budget. But, uh, needs to be done and we have the money to do it now, so. That's my recommendation. That's my motion. Thank you.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Friedman? Roll call please. Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Four.
Commissioner Freeman?
Four.
Commissioner Maybe?
Yes.
Commissioner Newt?
No. Motion passes. All right. Any other motions before we move on? Because we do have two more items and I only stated that we had one, but we have two more. Okay, okay, we're going to move on to action item C. And that is to discuss approved deny Indigenous Peoples' Day in Columbus. One second though, we do, like I said, we have a fourth action item and we will read that then, and I apologize for not stating that earlier. So go ahead, Mr. Carduce. You want to start?
Uh, thank you, ma'am chair. Yeah, this item was brought before you at your request. You had asked for some background and some options for Indigenous Peoples' Day and in relation to Columbus Day. And so what's provided to you is just a, a general background on the two, the two holidays, how they are observed across the world, across the country and across the state. As well as International Indigenous Peoples' Day, which is recognized on the ninth of August, I believe. And how this has been addressed throughout Montana with the, the four communities that are currently observing Indigenous Peoples' Day in, in lieu of Columbus Day to include Bozeman. Helena, Harlem and Missoula are the four that are doing that. And then other options were states that observe both holidays. Some of them are names slightly different, but in general, they observe both holidays. There are a couple of states that observe neither holiday. This issue was brought in front of the legislature in Montana. It did pass the House, but then it died in a committee in the Senate. And that's currently the background. So how you go forward is up to you. The legislative options are before you. This, the commission does set the holidays for the city in the, in the city code as well as in the personnel manual. So I'd be happy to take any questions.
Right, thank you, Michael. Um, let's open it to public comment. Hi. Can you hear me? Yes, who, is it Francine?
Yeah, this is Francine. I'm at two fifty South Sixth Avenue in Bozeman. Can I go?
Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening. First, I would like to thank the commissioners for including Indigenous Peoples' Day and the, on the agenda and for your consideration of it. Also, thank you to the person who took the time to assemble a brief, I'm sorry, assemble a brief introduction about the history of Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day as part of the packet of information for today's meeting. I greatly appreciate it. I want to mention that I am of the Cheyenne Nation, specifically the Northern Cheyenne located in southeastern Montana. And I'm also of settler descent. I'm a descendant of Chief Dolmire, also known as Morning Star, Pawnee woman and a pioneer who came out west in the late eighteen hundreds and married a lovely lady from the Northern Cheyenne. From a young age, I was taught by my indigenous family and community, not the K through twelve school system, about what my indigenous ancestors had to endure for me to exist here in this space we now call Montana. But just as important, I also learned as my life has unfolded, unfolded, we as indigenous peoples are incredibly resilient. Despite the harsh settler colonialism processes that came with the establishment of America, indigenous peoples still exist and have connection to the landscape. We still engage with it for sustenance, spiritual and recreational reasons. Today, millions of indigenous peoples and over five hundred indigenous nations are still connected to it. Including but not limited to the following nations in Montana today, the Assiniboine and Sioux, the Blackfeet, the Chipewa and Cree, the Confederate tribes of the Salish and Kootenai, the Crow, the Grovan, the Little Shell Band of Chipewa Cree and the Northern Cheyenne. Indigenous Peoples' Day is an incredible opportunity for us to start or continue to learn about this country's layered history, which of course needs to start with learning about first peoples who have existed here for thousands of years. We need to learn about indigenous history and culture from indigenous perspectives. Indigenous Peoples' Day is also an opportunity to celebrate the resiliency of indigenous peoples who will continue to exist and be continued, connected to all of the landscape as we go forward. Without a doubt, Indigenous Peoples' Days, day should exist and be celebrated in Livingston, Montana and all across the United States of America. Today, I hope you will help to make that possibility a reality in this community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Francine. Oh, Ben, go ahead, Ben.
Yes, thank you. I would like to thank Chair Hoagland and the city commissioners of Livingston for allowing me the time and platform to speak on this issue. My name is Ben Pease. I live in Billings at sixteen forty-nine Holly Hawk Street. I am Crow and Northern Cheyenne, but I am also a fifth generation Montanan from the first Crow Indian agent at Fort Parker, or as we say, the Sheilinuzal Fort Parker, which is at Mission Creek, right near the hide scraper, Sheep Mountain, as, as western, western culture knows that we know it is. Eh, who bish, ashgada, the, the hide scraper near the little creek. I'm calling in to voice my support of Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Livingston, adopting Indigenous Peoples' Day on, in replacement of Columbus Day on October twelfth. I want to focus on redefining an age old paradigm of the romantic West. I am one of the many co-founders of Indigenous Peoples' Day Montana as an organization. We want to focus on embracing and normalizing diversity. And the celebration of it at the city level, at the community level, at institutional levels. And really basing our movement on education and the diversity of our communities. And this is not simply about celebrating Native American heritage, but instead celebrating indigeneity. We want to include all peoples, recognize all peoples, because we are all indigenous at one point in time or another. And we can't forget that, that we can't leave that behind because our country was founded on diversity. Our country was founded on a lot of different types of peoples. And so being a fifth generation Montanan and an indigenous tribal member, I believe this can bring a healthy infusion to our institutions, to our economies, to our organizations and civil infrastructures in a lot of different ways. I can go into that, but this is not the time. I would also like to focus on building the collective knowledge of diversity in our communities in Montana, in Livingston and the United States of America, which it's built on. And so thank you again for the time and, uh, I hope.
Thank you, Ben. I think we have Blake. Go ahead, Blake.
Hi, I'm Blake Brightman. I live at thirty-seven Meridian Road in Livingston. I also want to say thank you for taking the time to just even consider this in the first place. I think it's very forward thinking and I, I, I think it's very important as well. Although I myself am not native, I very much, I'm affected, affected by this in my own kind of weird personal way. And I just want to read a quote from one of Christopher Columbus's journal entries. It's really quick. He says, while I was in the boat, I captured a very beautiful Caribbean woman. When I had taken her to my cabin, she was naked, as was their custom. I was filled with a desire to take my pleasure with her and attempted to satisfy my desire. She was unwilling and so treated me with her nails that I wish I had never begun. But to cut a long story short, I then took a piece of rope and whipped her soundly. And she set forth such incredible screams that you would not have believed your ears. Eventually, we came to such terms, I assure you, that would have thought that she had been brought up in a school of horrors. I can go on, on journal entries of Christopher Columbus that were, entries of his. I can, I can go on and on. It gets pretty horrifying. I will say though, that just as a woman who has experienced raping this community, it's, it's really frustrating to celebrate something like that. And so I can only imagine the impact of all of the thousands, hundreds of thousands of people that have been affected just throughout centuries now and what it, you know, what it means today to celebrate something like that and someone like that. So I just wanted to share my piece in that I am definitely in support of replacing Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day. I think it's a more encompassing holiday that celebrates people in our community to, to their core and like I, like I said, celebrate something that represents our community more than Columbus Day ever could.
Thank you, Blake. Thank you. Next, we have Katie, Katie Smith.
Hi, thank you so much for your time today and for, for having this up for discussion. I appreciate it. And I wanted to voice my support for Indigenous Peoples' Day in Livingston.
Katie, will you take one second? Just state, I know your name, but could you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Katie Smith, four thirteen South Ninth Street in Livingston. Yeah, so I think Indigenous Peoples' Day, it, I think it ties more into our state, into our community than Columbus Day and just reiterating and supporting the people who have spoken so far. I think it's important, it's an opportunity for us to learn more about the diversity that makes up our state, the history, the people. To learn about the nations who were here before us, to learn about their, their, not just about them, the past, but their contributions in the future to, to bring forward diversity, learning about different histories. I think it's really important and I would really be excited to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day in Livingston. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Katie. Next, we have Carson. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Carson Taylor. I live at eight West Harrison Street in Bozeman. I'm the former mayor of Bozeman and I thought you might be interested in hearing how Indigenous Peoples' Day has gone for us. We began celebrating it five years ago. It is scheduled for the second Monday of October and is seen as replacing Columbus Day. We adopted the idea because of a desire to celebrate our diversity in our city and to be a more inclusive community. And I think it's been working out pretty well. Each year, there's a proclamation from the mayor, celebrating Indigenous Peoples' Day. And each year, the mayor organizes a presentation from the indigenous community on some topic that bears education or that we would like to know more about. One year, we did contemporary art in the Native American community. Another year, we did history of Montana tribes. We also have coordinated with Montana State University and there have been presentations during the whole week in connection with them. In the pre-COVID era, we would begin with a round dance on the, the campus between with members of our community, members to the indigenous community and members of the MSU community. The presentations to the commission have been about five to ten minutes long, but quite informative. And I think it's fair to say that we've all learned from the experience and that the celebration has brought a broader view to all of the people in Bozeman. Indigenous Peoples' Day has been a good start at bringing our community together, celebrating the diversity, being inclusive and educating all of us so that we can share different experiences and learn from one another. Thank you very much for your time and thank you for taking this up.
Thank you, Carson. Next, Barb. Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, thank you for allowing me the time to make this comment. And I want to express gratitude to the previous public speakers, both the Livingston residents who've spoken about their personal feelings about this and then also folks from other communities who have spoken. The two things I wanted to say just starting off is that whether or not the commission decides to change the name, I was confused about the statement that one action you could take would be to cancel this is a holiday for city workers. And I don't, I don't see how those two are connected. In fact, I think there are many important and appropriate community activities which would be an excellent fit for Indigenous Peoples' Day. And it's certainly a day that warrants special attention rather than business as usual. So I am not in favor of removing this as a city employee holiday, whether or not you change the name. And I also just want to be really clear that often I'm speaking to you in my professional role with the community foundation. But today I'm speaking as a private citizen. And this is a topic that I feel very strongly about. I know that talking about your California roots doesn't make you very popular in Montana. So I mostly keep quiet about that, but this evening I'm very proud to be able to say that I grew up in Berkeley, California. I raised my daughter in Berkeley. And I was really thrilled to see that the summary of the history of Indigenous Peoples' Day included the detail that the city of Berkeley was one of the first to make the switch from Columbus Day. What that summary didn't mention is that while that was a really big deal in the Bay Area in a positive sense, in Berkeley, it was also really challenging with our neighbors across the bay in San Francisco. San Francisco has a very large Italian community, a large Italian neighborhood, North Beach. And they also have a very vibrant Columbus Day parade that celebrates Italian heritage. Perhaps similar to St. Patrick's Day celebrations in Butte is an opportunity to celebrate Irish pride. And I just want to bring this up to really encourage the commissioners to, when you're discussing this, to uncouple the celebration of Columbus Day with any comments about Italian heritage. As with so many different ethnic groups, Italians have of course made significant contributions to American culture. And as such, absolutely deserve to be celebrated. Columbus himself, on the other hand, has a really horrific legacy. For reference on this, I pulled up some summaries from the History Channel, which I hope we can all agree is a pretty middle of the road resource. But even the History Channel doesn't shy away from saying that Columbus was a deeply flawed man. He ordered the enslavement and murder of countless natives. He shipped slaves to Spain to be sold. He ordered brutal crackdowns. Those are things he did intentionally. And in addition, whether intentional or not, he also brought smallpox and other new diseases which decimated the and other new diseases which decimated the native community. So in summary, Columbus was really the root source of significant long-term negative consequences for indigenous people. So I submit that changing the name of this holiday is an important first step in acknowledging that brutal legacy. Perhaps in a later time, we can talk about other actions which other groups do, such as starting meetings by naming the indigenous lands on which we're meeting or even paying reparation taxes as my religious congregation in the Bay Area has chosen to do, recognizing that our congregation is based on land that was taken forcefully. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Barb. Next, we have Shane. Go ahead, Shane.
Hey, thank you. My name is Shane Morjo, and I live in Missoula. My address is 808 Polaris Way here in Missoula, Montana. And I currently was actually just selected to appointed to a senate seat today and formerly served as a minority whip in House leadership for the Democrats over the last two sessions and had the opportunity to carry Indigenous Peoples' Day legislation last session. And we were fortunate to have a lot of great conversations with folks on both sides of the aisle. And what I noticed the most was just the fact that when we, we had conversations and we educated individuals at the legislature, we were able to really inspire people to look at this issue more holistically to make change. And we were able to really do enough education on Christopher Columbus to, to be able to get the legislation out of the House, which was a pretty big feat, and it took a lot of conversations and but I think, you know, when you actually talk about what Christopher Columbus did and stood for, you know, for me, as a native person, I'm a member of the Salish and Kootenai tribes, you know, Christopher Columbus's legacy was, was that of really you know, genocide and slavery and sex trafficking. It said that he likely is one of the first to have documented sex trafficking. He, in his soldiers, often when you do the journal entries and you, and you read about what they did, they would sit and cut indigenous people in half for days on end to test the sharpness of their swords. And that's just something, I think, when you learn about it, it's something that doesn't deserve to be honored. And I think, you know, for me, as a native person, I want this to be inclusive. I want this to be a day for everybody to celebrate each other. And I'm proud to live in a, in a city that has took that, those steps and that initiative to better represent everybody in Montana, no matter where you come from. So would be in support of your city advocating and supporting Indigenous Peoples' Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Shane. And Crystal. Go ahead.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair and Livingston City Commissioners. My name is Crystal Allegria, and I currently live in Bozeman, Montana at 191 Arcadia Lane. But I was born and raised in Livingston. Growing up in Livingston, I knew the land I lived on once belonged to indigenous people. But it wasn't until attending Montana State University that I learned the significant and complex history of this place I call home. It's there. I also learned the historical truths about Christopher Columbus and how he subjugated, tortured, and obliterated the Tano and Arawak people. Now, as a historian, it's my job to track down the hard facts of history. When looking at the historical life of Columbus, it's important to strip away the fiction. He did not discover America. There were already thousands of indigenous people here, and archaeological evidence shows that they had been here for over 12,000 years. Not only did he not discover America, he was detrimental to the indigenous people who lived here. Samuel Elliott Morrison, a historian from Harvard and author of a biography on Columbus, writes, quote, "The cruel policy initiated by Columbus and pursued by his successors resulted in complete genocide," unquote. It is important to understand and change how we represent Columbus in Montana and in this country, especially in our primary and secondary schools. Montana's Office of Public Instruction and Indian Education for All have done a wonderful job here in Montana over the past 10 years to teach our students about Montana's significant indigenous history. But we need to make clear to our children that we stand by the indigenous people of Montana and honor our shared history of this place. Columbus did not discover America, and he was just an awful human being. Let's not give our children mixed messages by honoring this man and putting him on a pedestal. This is not an attempt to rewrite or revise history in any way. We are just looking critically at the life of Christopher Columbus, understanding the factual evidence and are making an informed choice to change who we celebrate in our towns and in our state. History will reflect that we celebrated Columbus Day, but it will also hopefully reflect that we changed the state to reflect new knowledge and a new understanding of our history. So let's follow the lead of other Montana towns and make the change from Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. Let's recognize and validate our indigenous history by replacing Columbus Day, honoring the indigenous people who stand with us here today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Crystal. All right, next, Marshall. Go ahead. Go ahead, Marshall.
Is that Marcia or?
Oh, I think it was put in as Marshall. So go ahead, Marcia, actually.
No worries, no worries. Thank you very much. I don't know why I find myself so incredibly nervous right now. Normally, you can't get me to shut up. But I will go ahead and start, and I would thank land acknowledgement to the original peoples of this land and who we reside on, where we now reside. I would also like to thank the City of Livingston Council for making this time, taking time to address Indigenous Peoples' Day. I'd like to thank City Manager Michael Cardos for this, for writing the synthesis of the summary of what Columbus Day is. I would like to too thank all the people that have presented about Indigenous Peoples' Day. I am I am Northern Cheyenne. I'm a co-founder of Indigenous Peoples' Day, Montana. There, there are multiple people that are co-founders of Indigenous Peoples' Day, but we have a commonality, and that's having a great heart, a good heart, and gear to change, to implement change. Good change. And we seek to correct the interpretive paradox in history, in educational and community systems that claim Columbus discovered America and that he was a heroic figure. Neither of this is true. Neither of these are true. In fact, he regularly sold nine-year-old girls to his men and began the continent-wide genocide of the people by murder and forced, and enforced slavery. To this day, the atrocities still continue. And in addition, by instituting Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday of each October, it will become a celebration for all. For we all are indigenous to one hemisphere or another. It's a reminder to never forget your roots nor your ancestral heritages. Let us all celebrate each other and build toward a collective horizon and respect for all. We must keep the rate, the word race out of this narrative because this is not based on race. It's based on a collective action to make the world better and to correct the educational, the interpretive paradox in education. I learned how to draw the three ships. I learned how to color them. For years, I thought Columbus discovered America. Well, we know this is not true. I mostly think that in order for a unified healing move forward, that we must, we must start at ground, ground zero, if you will. And so I think with implementing Indigenous Peoples' Day and the city of Livingston and the fine city of Livingston will go a long way toward the healing. It's our, it's our charge as Indigenous Peoples' Day, Montana, to get this passed at the state level. That's our goal. But our goal is to make this world better. I think it's about what I got. I don't know. I think I have to tell you my address. It's 601 Peter Koch. I'm a graduate student in Erskine. I'm doing a doctoral. I'm, I'm doing a doctoral degree. But I thank you so much for your time, and I appreciate all of you.
Thank you, Marcia. Jenny Jo, what's up? Go ahead, Jenny Jo.
Hi, thank you. I really don't have anything new to add. Everybody has spoken so eloquently about everything that I also feel and believe about replacing, I don't even want to say his name, that Christopher Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day. It's so important that, that we don't honor this, this monster that, you know, we are still teaching that this person discovered America is just, it's not right. And I, I agree with Marcia that this is ground zero. Just it's, it's the least we can do. It is at least a beginning for us to start at. So please replace, replace that holiday with Indigenous Peoples' Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny Jo.
I forgot to tell you my address. It's 14 West Summit.
Becca is up. Go ahead, Becca.
Thank you. I'm Becca Fruck, 125 South 8th Street. I want to thank everyone who has commented. The words that y'all have offered are really moving. And I also want to echo that I too support replacing Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day. Holidays, like I mentioned earlier, much like budgets, holidays are value statements as a community. What do we hold in reverence? What matters to us? Columbus is not a part of this community. His descendants are not a part of this community. The folks who are neighbors, our native brothers and sisters who are here in this state are asking us to embrace our heritage. And this is an opportunity for us to collectively celebrate what makes Montana so special, and that includes our indigenous communities. Who is Columbus to us? Like, how is this even a conversation? And a lot of that is a legacy of colonialism and a legacy that folks have brought up that is abhorrent and horrific and based in human suffering. And this is, this is an incredible opportunity for Livingston to lead, to be part of some of these other progressive Montana cities who have joined this cause and be ahead of the game. I'm really hopeful that the state takes this on, and I so appreciate the work that the folks are doing to make that happen at the state level. I think this is a really important step in truth, reconciliation, and healing that will, that will bring us all closer to a better place and a more inclusive, warm community that I think we all want to be in. It's such a gift to live in a place where we have the connections we're able to make with our native communities and the way they show up for us, and we need to show up for them. And so I'm really, I so, so hope that the commission, here's what everyone says tonight, takes that to heart and uses this opportunity to make a stand about what we honor and who matters to us. And it's our neighbors and those folks. Those folks or those indigenous communities, the Crow and the Cheyenne and the Salish-Kootenai and all the others that we just, there's so much to learn, and it's so exciting. It really is. And Indigenous Peoples' Day is going to give us that opportunity among many others. And I'm, I'm thrilled that it's up for discussion. And so I, I thank you, Cardo, you know, City Manager Cardos for doing the research and for the commission for reviewing this and for everyone who has spoken tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Becca. One second. We do need to extend the meeting or make a motion to extend the meeting. Could I get a motion from the commission to extend?
We'll make a motion.
Aye, second.
Motion by Newt's second by Schwartz. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Onto Rena. Go ahead, Rena.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
I am Rena Wallace at 214 Loves Lane, Livingston. And I just wanted to say that I agree with the previous speakers. I don't have anything to add, but I just wanted to say that I agree and think that Columbus Day should be changed to Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Thank you, Rena.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see anyone else in the chat. Is there anyone else who would like public comment?
Chair Hoagland.
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, this is Michelle Iberaga. I'm at 711 Lockleaven Drive here in Livingston. I don't want to take up too much time. I just want to thank all of the commenters today and thank the commission for this action item and just echo the support that I think it's really important that our community moves forward and changes the celebration of Columbus Day to a celebration of Indigenous Peoples' Day instead. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Michelle. Then we have one other person. Joan, go ahead, Joan. Go ahead, Joan.
Hello?
Yep, go ahead.
Oh, hi. My name's, can you hear me?
Yes, then it's, you know, we were just waiting for Joan, or is this a different person on Joan's phone?
Um, is this Daniela's phone? But I don't know what it says on there. And Yeldon.
Joan, are you struggling to get on? So I'm going to have Daniela, and we'll keep it open for Joan in a second. Go ahead, Daniela.
Hey, so Daniela at 705 Lockleaven Drive. I just want to echo the support of changing it from Columbus to Indigenous Peoples' Day. It's something that I'm very emotional about. So just to restate that Columbus was a rapist and he sold children for sex, and that shouldn't be honored, and that should be pushed to, you know, to have the commissioners make that decision is, is being the parents in our community of saying, we're not going to stand for that behavior, and we're not going to support that behavior. And really acknowledging, you know, the people, like some have said, our neighbors. I'm native, but I'm not from this region. I'm from Mexico. But it's still, it's, you know, it's everybody. We're all indigenous. We all come from a land, and that should be supportive and, and given space to be honored. So I just echo the support of changing it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Daniela. Joan, are you able to get in?
I think so.
Okay, there she is.
Thank you so much for opening this discussion, this very, very important discussion. I'm going to clip my remarks because other people have talked about the profound and extreme brutality of Columbus. But really, celebrating Columbus is equal to celebrating brutality, and it's equal to celebrating slavery. We know who he was because he kept a diary, and other people kept diaries who were observing his behavior. I also want to say, after listening to other people's comments, that continuing to celebrate Columbus Day makes us liars. It makes us lie to our children, which is something we never want to do. There's no way that we can tell a six-year-old, even a 12-year-old what, who Columbus really was, because we would be talking about things that are so awful to know. One of the one things that has always struck me, once I learned Um, one of the one things that has always struck me, once I learned who this man really was. Uh, was stories, um. Of the fact that, um, those natives who could not provide him with enough gold had their hands severed. He was profoundly brutal. So, um, we need to take him down from the shaky pedestal he's on. Um, and move him to the libraries of our history where the real story can be stored. Um, it's so important for us to tell the truth to ourselves, to our children. And once we freed ourselves from this brutal man, we can celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day. We have a lot of time to make up, but we can start now. Learning from our indigenous brothers and sisters, how to understand and honor our human place among all life. Um, I thank you and I really encourage you to replace Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Joan. Let's take another look. It. Looks like that is our last. Public speaker. Thank you very much, everyone. A lot of interest and participation. We really appreciate it. So let's, um, open it to commissioners. Do we have any commissioner comment to start?
Durrell.
Go ahead, Mel.
It's been a difficult day for me. I belong to the Knights of Columbus. Um, I wasn't born when they established the holiday in nineteen thirty-four. I was, came along in nineteen thirty-five. I've heard mixed reviews about Columbus himself, but the thing that I'm sad about. Is that the Knights of Columbus is a worldwide organization. We do tremendous work. I'm all for this, uh, indigenous thing that I'm a hundred and fifty percent on board with that. It's just kind of a sad day for me because I know the kind of work that we do worldwide and the things that we support. And, uh, I just want the people to know that the Knights of Columbus and Columbus himself. You'll hear all kinds of stories about Columbus and I, I don't want to go into that at all. Um, I am very proud of what the Knights of Columbus do, so I, I just wanna, it's been on my head all day long. It's been a difficult thing. But again, I'm all for the indigenous, uh, to make that a holiday. How we want to handle it is up to, you know, up to the people. But I don't want to get to the Knights of Columbus involved this. To what he was. I'm telling you what we are today and we do an awful lot of good things, so I had to say that. It's been difficult. I yield.
Thank you, Mel. Other commissioners, go ahead.
Uh, Durrell.
Yep, go ahead.
Um. What I've noticed, um, over the last month or year or whatever. There is. In a lot of cases. There's, there's no balance in viewpoint. What I mean by that is I would not, uh, begin to attempt to refute. Christopher Columbus is past. Um, I would also like to add to the conversation that, uh. Um. No one is a saint. Uh, there's no one group. Um. And there's. Again, over the past year or whatever timeframe, there's been too much broad brush. Tainting of groups, whatever the group happens to be. Um. And what I see here is, um. A, um, not a total, uh, clear view of, um. Of, of the situation. Um, and again, that goes for any group. Uh, there are no saints. Thank you. Chair Hoagland, you're still muted.
Sorry, everyone. I. In up on my screen, so I apologize if we have some delays here because I think there's a lot of people on. Melissa or Quentin? Quentin, are you?
Um, did Melissa want, did Melissa want to get in first or me?
Go ahead. Quentin, go ahead.
Hey, I'm all in favor of, um, change of state to. Indigenous Peoples' Day, um. Um. I know it's a federal holiday right now, Columbus Day and stuff like that, and however we have to work that out. So be it, but this is, uh, something that's been a long time coming. And, uh, needs to be done and taken care of now and I'm so supportive of this. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Quentin. Well.
Hi.
Hi.
So, um. I feel like this gift that I have of being a mother and a commissioner is extra. Present tonight. Um, and I'm, and I'm always thinking when we vote about how these decisions are going to impact. Our children and our children's children and all the generations that have yet to be stewards of this land. Um. And I just want to acknowledge that here in Livingston, my kids are already learning a broader history, a more complete history than I did as a child. And that makes me really excited. I'm actually, um. I'm feeling a little overwhelmed tonight hearing so many. Just so many stories and so much truth telling and I'm excited that our kids are growing up in this place where they're getting a better. Older, broader, um. History and. Collectively, we have this like joyous opportunity to broaden our ways of knowing here in Livingston. So to me, it's, it's really an historic day and I'm glad my kid is here and may need to witness it. Um, I think step one is Indigenous Peoples' Day and step two is we need to start planning how we'll celebrate.
All right, thank you, Melissa. Um. Yeah, I, I. It is a pretty, uh. Intensely amazing, uh. Meeting tonight and, and the feedback that we are getting from our community. And from the, the greater community, obviously not everyone lives here, but, um. The native community and your voices really do matter to us and we appreciate, um, you joining us tonight. Very important. Um. And I think that. It, another bit of history, which like I was stating earlier tonight, that we don't always have the history behind things, but. We. Wrote a proclamation as a community in support of. Diversity and, um. That, well, diversity of all kinds. And so we believe as a commission and as a community, well, at least as a commission. We proclaim that we believe in, um, diversity being an important part of our community and that we will support people. Of all gender. Et cetera. Okay, all persuasion, all, um. Sexual, uh, persuasion, whatever words that we want to use, L B G T Q plus, everything. Um. And I think this is reflection of that, that we need to stand up for one other voice and that is our native voice. And, um, I can't imagine not supporting something like this. Um, and I often think I have children too. What do I want them to see me standing up for? And this is one of the things I will stand up for. Um. As we did with the proclamation. Uh, and that was the first week of COVID. Um, shutting us down. Not anyone or no one heard it. And it was like this big voice I wanted to, everyone to hear that this mattered to us, but. No one was around to hear it really, except for a few people. So this, thank you for joining us and a lot more people are going to hear it. Um, so yes, I believe strongly in, uh, in particular, I think. I would like to see, um. Indigenous Peoples' Day replaced the second Monday of October. And for us to call it what it should be. Um. That's where I am on it. Uh, any other last comments or?
That part sounded like a motion, Madam Chair, and a very good one.
Um. Yes, and oh, thank you. That will be my motion, but I also want to just state for Mel. It. I don't, I've ever related, um, the work of the, of the Knights of Columbus, which I know they do a lot of great work. They give back, I mean, to children a lot in our community and around our. To, um, a negative occasion because I can see the, the power in what you guys do, so. I, I get it. It's a struggle when, when names are associated. Um, but we still value the Knights of Columbus and their hard work. Um, other than that, I guess I did have a motion. Uh, which was to declare the second Monday of October, um, as. Indigenous Peoples' Day. And replace it. Replace Columbus Day.
I second.
Oh, we, I guess it's time. I'm sorry. Um, we have a motion by me, by Hoagland and the second by Schwartz. Roll call, please. Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Commissioner Friedman.
Or.
Commissioner Maybe.
Yes.
Commissioner News.
Yes.
Passes. Thanks, everyone, for joining us. And thank you, um, Fran and especially Francine, Ben, very active voices in our Montana. And Marcia, very active voices in, in getting things done in our state for our native people. We appreciate you and I love your art, Ben.
And Shane, congratulations.
Yes, and Shane, sorry, missed you. All right, we're moving on. We do have one more, um, agenda item. And I have it on my phone, so I apologize. I'm looking at my phone. Um. Now have to get it back up here. So our last action. Um. Is a resolution, uh. Of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana. It's, I'm sorry, resolution forty-eight or forty-nine thirty. Adopting a new, oh, that's the wrong one. Sorry. I am reading the wrong one. That was the one we already. Faith? I have the wrong one. Can someone else read it? Michael, can you just read it for me? The addendum, because I don't have it. This is the last one I was sent.
So, so Madam Chair, this one isn't actually a resolution, so it doesn't have a number? Um, it was an eventual resolution. Um, so that was, that was the first one that we did with the impact fee. This one is just an action item.
I got. Yep, I got it now. Thank you, guys. I was like, what, what is this? All mixed in there. Um. So the, then she just wrote, this is to discuss Parks and Trail. Trails Committee's policy for naming Livingston parks, trails and recreation facilities. And just a little background on it. Thank you guys for your patience on me trying to get that out. Um. This is a com- uh, committee work that has been done over, um, a period of time. Asked by the commission for, um, if, to be brought to the committee for consideration. Um, and then we missed putting it on the, this agenda and we apologize for that. But I see that Jean Marie is here and she's the chair of Parks and Trails. And, um, she can update us on. The, uh, action item. Go ahead, Jean Marie.
Thanks, um, Chairman Hoagland. This is something, as, as Durrell said, you asked us to, um, create. We discussed it in May and June. We had a front page story on the. Um, in the enterprise about it in September. We had it on our agenda for our Parks and Trails Committee meeting in September and October. Um, this was developed based on language in Bozeman, Missoula and Billings, who all have policies that are quite similar. Um, we also looked at Gallatin County and then we adapted it for Livingston. So our goal, and remember this came about because there was a proposal in, um, last year to rename. The O Street Connector Trail. We realized we didn't have a policy for naming or renaming any of our parks and trails. So it goes to the naming process, what qualifies, um, how you rename it and then a little bit in signage. And I'm happy to answer questions.
All right. Well, let's open it to public comment. I know this addendum came as the last item. Um, and was added and I asked for that addition to get it onto our agenda. But, um, if, is there any public comment on this item? Okay, no public comment. Uh, commissioners. Who have any questions or comments? I'm just looking at the information here. Um, I'll start as I stated, so I'm a, the. A big fan of the Parks and Trails, as I've said multiple times in meetings. I feel it's a committee that does great work. They work hard. Um, this is a great example of just a. A nicely defined document, not over, overly done or, you know, it's clear. Um, it was brought up during, um. A time when there was a request to name a trail after. By the way, it was Jean Marie. They wanted, uh, someone wanted to name it after. And, uh. And I think this document is great at. Clarifying the process. And, um, I support it. Other commissioners. I'm gonna call on guys. Someone has to say something. Melissa?
Yeah, I'll say something. So I think it's, I agree. I think it's well thought out and thorough. Um. I think it's going to be easier. I guess in some sense to fully understand the document, like when we see it put in use and where a name is being proposed. You know what I, like, that's going to help clarify it. I think, um. Everything's laid out and then the hard part's probably going to be actually naming things. You know, or correcting the names of things or updating the names of things. Um, but I appreciate, I just really appreciate our boards so much. Um. You've already said how much work Parks and Trails does and I agree and. Our boards are just stepping up and doing so much work and I'm grateful. Thank you and thank you, Jean Marie.
Thank you, Melissa. Any other commissioner comments? Okay, then we'll move to a motion. Do we have a motion on action item?
Could I, um, interrupt just very briefly?
Uh, please.
So I hadn't seen this before, uh, Friday. And I didn't really have the chance to look at it till Monday and I, I think that in large part, you're right. This is straightforward for the most part. It calls out all the right things and it's a nice compen- uh, combination. Straightforward for the most part. It calls out all the right things and it's a nice company, a combination of the other. Processes that they reviewed and one that we can make work pretty well. I would ask the commission to make a couple of changes. And we can bring this back to you if you want, but. The board, it's the Parks and Trails Board that's actually making the decision. The the committees are. A subset of the board and and certainly I know that they work very hard and they make recommendations. But the word committee should probably be changed to board as the decision making body for the. For the. The naming policy. In the exceptions on at the bottom of page one.
Courtney, would you just stop? So you're saying to say board instead of committee? Why? I'm just confused as to why.
Because it is the Parks and Trails Board, correct?
No, it's the committee. Yeah, we're the Planning Board, Parks and Trails Committee. Zoning Commission.
Okay. So this is the Parks and Trails. Committee that is a subset of the Planning Board?
No, that's a subset of us. There are. Recommending. Organization, just like the Planning Board is different and they're the only one with powers. They are recommend in committee, just like the tree board, everything else.
So they are effectively a board, but they are called a committee?
Yes.
I understand. All right, so.
Do we want to put board after committee is what you're saying and just say in the quote saying board?
Let me jump in here real quick. I think the confusion is in general, when you define a committee, it's a subset of a larger organization, right? Like. You have subcommittees, so. In general, all of our boards are boards and if you have a committee, it's a smaller portion of a board. Is the classic definition of committee. So the terminology is just a little weird. I think that that was the the issue. So if if we consistently call and call Parks and Trail the committee and. That's how the. Bylaws read and I'd have to double check the bylaws to make sure that's how they read. The committee's fine. It's a little weird nomenclature wise, but it it can stay that way.
Well, it's been like that, I think, for how many years? Jean Marie?
A long time and and I will point out that in every case, the recommendation from the committee goes to the commission.
Right. So that's my misunderstanding and if we want to clarify that it is a bard, we can put it right before. The naming process section and to the board, which is the Parks and Trails Committee, but understanding it. As long as it's consistent and it is what you're called, I'm okay with it. I don't think there's a need to amend it just to make sure that it's clear and it certainly is clear to you when it wasn't to me. The second part was the exception to the naming procedure. And in a. The. The approval in one, two, three, line four, that begins in line three and ends in line four. Which approval shall be forwarded to the Committee for Recommendation, which happens after the Planning Board's approval. And then to the City Commission, it really puts the Planning Board and the Board, which is. The Parks and Trails Committee at odds. And if we're going to create an exception for. The subdivisions where developers are, as long as they follow. The guidelines that you have set out in this process, are you all right with them? Doing it as long as they follow the process and then after it is approved by the Planning Board, it goes to the commission?
We could be, I think the reason the committee put this in there was concerned that if the Planning Board wasn't aware. Of all the names and the considerations going into things, they might approve something that we were aware of, they weren't aware of.
I completely understand and we can reword it a little bit. But I didn't want to put the two boards at odds in front of the commission. As far as section B, the capital campaigns. I didn't want the city manager to establish guidelines that were different from what is in here. And my suggestion is actually to take section B out. Because if we just make it mandatory that everybody follow this policy, then we don't have to set that up separately.
Do you want me to respond to what? Okay, the the reason we put that in there was because. We didn't necessarily feel like our committee should get involved in a big. If there was a big capital campaign. That. That could go right to the city manager. To. Address it because he would be or she would be more familiar with what was going on with that fundraising campaign than we would be. So we're willing to do it anyway you want. We just thought that's an extraordinary circumstance.
And and I think that you cover that. In selection of name criteria. In one F. Four. So you have, you actually have. A standard in there that allows you to do that. Without deviating or creating an exception.
Chair Hoagland.
Yeah, Melissa, go ahead.
I'd like to make a suggestion that this is. Not typically how we edit documents at a meeting when. There's city. When there's city feedback on something that comes from a board, I wonder if we can. You know, usually there's the suggested edits or like a staff report or something that comes along with it. It makes it a little bit easier for us as commissioners to follow along, right? Rather than trying to. At the meeting, I was wondering if maybe we could bring this back to the next agenda item. I'm sorry, the next meeting as an agenda item. With. Courtney's feedback. Written out, it would make it easier to follow.
Yeah, I was actually going to just say that. So thank you, Melissa. I agree. Just so we can have that time with with the city attorney. Looking at it and fine tooth combing through some of the issues and patients, so. We don't have to make a motion, we just are going to table it to put it on to in another. The next agenda with the corrections and making sure the document is ready. Is that all right?
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yep, go ahead.
I agree. Alright, no, I agree. No, I agree, yeah, but. Yeah, table it or pass it on, yeah.
So it's not really. We're not tabling it right, Michael?
Right, yeah.
Right. The motion is postponed.
I would just refer it back to the staff to provide you edits.
Yep, so we don't have to make a motion. We're gonna just move it to, yeah, exactly. Okay? So everyone's in agreement. If, let's have Jean Marie and Courtney. Can you guys do a check in just on some of the documentation? Are those questions at some point before it comes back?
Sure.
All right. And Michael. You know, everyone, everyone can join. We're moving on. We are actually done with our. Action items. We're moving on to city manager comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have two quick things. Well, I'm gonna throw a third one because it entertains me. Just to make sure that everyone's really clear in Parks and Trails Committee, their bylaws say that the Parks and Trails Committee is a permanent advisory board. So the Parks and Trails Committee is a board. I love that. While I know this is another long meeting and these agendas are long. If you look back at what the commission has accomplished over the last two or three months, it's actually astounding. And I encourage you to go back and look at that and see how many issues that this city has faced for. And sometimes decades. That you have addressed in the last couple of months. And come up with solutions and they may not be perfect solutions and you may not love all of them, but. You are making more progress for this city as a commission than I think has been made in a long, long time and it's 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 very impressive. So I just wanted to put that out there. Finally, I did send you an email today on some feedback from a a. Citizen on the police department and some of their their actions that went above and beyond what we expected them. I I swear 10 minutes after I sent you that email, I got a a similar letter from the same person. Lotting the efforts of our our ambulance crew and the paramedics. That came and I will send that on to you too, but I wanted, I wanted you to know that both organizations, and this is an example of them working so well together. Really do serve the community well and I think in a better fashion than you will find in a lot of communities. So I just wanted to put that out there that I think. The community does understand how much our first responders are doing for them and when they get to interact with them in a in a really important. You know, interaction, they see how professional they are and how willing they are to really serve the community. So I just wanted to throw that out there for you and that is all I have for this evening.
Well, thank you, Michael. Melissa. Commissioner comments?
Yes, first, thank you to everybody that came tonight. I. I'm just constantly astounded. That during these days of covid, the turnout seems to get more and more impressive for meetings and. And we're all zoomed out, so it's it's something that people keep showing up because we've all got to have zoom zoom fatigue by now, but um. I I just want to also like acknowledge, I guess, that. We experienced as a community, our first covid death in Park County since the last time we met and acknowledge and. Just offer condolences to the family and the loved ones that. I guess we knew it would happen eventually, but it's still horrible that it's happening. Because we're all neighbors and friends and. The other thing I wanted to. Say, Michael already said it. I think it's really amazing the things that we're getting done. He already named some stuff. I'm gonna name the Housing Action Plan. I'm really excited about that. That's. The Park County Housing Work Group that's already. Coming together and starting to make plans on how to tackle our housing challenges. I'm really excited because that's a big issue. That a lot of people have been trying to figure out how we're going to solve these problems and we've been coming at it from different angles. Pretty regularly at meetings. In some way or another, we're talking about housing and actually voting. And taking action for solutions that will actually help the people who live here and that's incredible because it's an overwhelming topic. So um, so I'm proud of us. I'm proud of us for doing that too. And when I say us, I mean all of us, the city, staff and the commission. So that's all I yield.
Thanks, Melissa. Warren.
We just wanted to mention the last commission meeting. The participants in the. In the Zoom. Had some. Kind of nebulous suggestions or recommendations. And since then, I've. We all have received much. More direct comments. And by a whole lot more people than usual. About what. Whatever, what everyone's looking to happen. I want to thank them for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Warren. Next is Mel.
Yeah, thank you for. A good meeting. It's good to get the participation of the city and people interested in what we do. I don't know what happens when the Zoom goes out of date. I'm ready for it to happen, but it'll be a different dynamics. But I think we got a good team. Everybody's working at peak performance. And we're covering a lot of ground. And there's a lot of ground to cover and especially during this period run, so I want to. Give my thanks to the public and also to my fellow commissioners for sticking in there. Have a good night.
Thanks, Mel. Quentin.
Yes, just to, you know, back up on that, follow up on that. Yeah, the public participation's been great and I love that. Other than that. Cases arising, we have to be smart about that and. Be vigilant.
Yes, I was gonna say something about public engagement as well and how exciting it is. And we we invite you to give us a call and a lot of people talked about history tonight and. Not like acknowledging that we don't always know all the. Fine intricacies of things and and history and and please call us and. A lot of us have that. We have a lot of information that we can share to help you understand. Also, it is shout out time. Finally, I apologize. Kind of dropped the ball on that for a while, but I have a shout out today to. Two women that I happen to work with, but I think they're a good example of what's happening right now. And that is Sue Harriman. And Holly Sankovich and they are our school nurses. So with covid. One of the. Things that people. Maybe don't understand that has changed or have don't know of, I should say, that has changed is a. School nurses have been thrown into sort of a medical. Level of decision making and safety with safety and protocols that is just unheard of. And it's an example of what's happening across our country where people are having to step up that are in medicine to take care of. People dying and. And, you know, we think of that our doctors and our nurses are the ones doing it, but then there's. School nurses that are, they. Our school nurse, for example, had to get rapid tests and she said, I went to go get more. Because there's so many people coming. To get rapid tests today and I don't know if I'll have enough. And I said, how many? And she said, I think I have three hundred. So there's three hundred people minimum that are worried that they have covid right now. And she stepped in to do that. And that's Sue and. And every day we discuss things like what a protocol can look like to keep students safer or what. You know, as a district, we we meet with Laurel. She Laurel Desnick talks to us weekly and. Gives us updates and so all these people are working working together, but. Those forgotten ones are. Are. Nurses, our school nurses who have really given more than you can imagine and. One last thing is Sue and I laughed one day when we were like, what I would do to have lice going around school right now? Because lice, what used to be like my nightmare? Covid's way worse. I'll take lice any day over covid, but. Thank you, Sue Harriman and Holly Sankovich for keeping us safer. That's all I have tonight. Do I have a motion from the commission for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? The Livingston City Commission is adjourned at. Nine twenty seven. Everyone.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Great meeting.